All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 28th School Board Meeting of the Dairy Cooperative School District. Would everyone join me in rising for the national -- pleasure allegiance? Thank you. I'm going to go over approval of minutes from the July 14th non-public and remote meeting. Motion for approval, please.
So moved.
Motion by Nick. Second by Jessica. Any changes? Seeing none, all for approval.
Aye.
Abstentions, not for approval. Motion passes. Okay, this evening, before we get to our regular agenda, we do have a public hearing on the CARES Act funds acceptance. And Ms. Semard will handle that.
We just want to formally bring forward to the board for an official vote to exit -- it's on, I'm just not sure why. Can you hear it now? Thank you. To have a formal vote to accept the funds for the CARES Act, which we've presented to the board on several occasions, the district would be receiving $699,000 approximately that's shared with Pinkerton Academy, and that's our allocation for the CARES Act for such items as extended learning, items that would be directly related to COVID, to support the district for PPE and things of that nature, getting the additional Chromebooks. So we just wanted to bring forward through a public hearing that amount for consideration for the board to expend those funds.
I needed to read a message that Comcast currently, the signal is down for Channel 6. For those that are trying to join us from home, we recommend going to the Derry School District Facebook page where this is being live streamed. Comcast is working on that, and if we get updates, we will update you on that. So do we have any public comment on the hearing for the CARES Act funds acceptance? Okay. Seeing none, can I take a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Nick, second by Erica. Any discussion on the topic?
Jane, just real quick, does that account for all the expenditure the district has had to this point relative to the CARES Act and the COVID outbreak? Or are we still waiting or perhaps looking to -- are we just short? That's the simple question.
That does not cover all of our expenditures to date. We're also applying for FEMA funds as well for the additional items to return to school.
Great.
And of a portion of that $699,000 is for Pinkerton Academy. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. All said, Derek.
All right. Try to be more gentle with my microphone, I guess. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Would you like me to make the motion?
We have a motion.
Okay, never mind.
Thank you. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstentions.
Seeing none, the motion passes. Without further ado, we have a presentation on the plan to reopen the schools by Maryann.
That helps. First, welcome and thank you to all those present in all of our rooms at Gilbert Hood Middle School this evening, and to those who are viewing the school board meeting from home. I hope that you are well and enjoying your summer with family and friends. Please note that the presentation, along with the roadmap to reopening schools document that was posted on Sunday, July 26th, are available on the Derry School District website. Since March 16th, 2020, when New Hampshire schools shifted to a remote instructional model as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, the unequivocal goal of the Dairy Cooperative School District has been for students and staff to return safely to school on-site in the fall. As a school community, we have long valued the importance of face-to-face instruction. This commitment to onsite education is balanced with the need to provide for the safety and well-being of our entire school community. That being said -- you still can't hear? That being said, the complexities associated with developing plans that satisfy changing criteria are numerous. There are a multitude of options associated with the available research regarding COVID-19, its transmission and mitigation strategies. However, what remains certain is the role that schools have in the educational, social, emotional, nutritional, physical activity, and overall well-being of students. Learning, growth, and connections, this is what we strive to optimize for students each day in the Dairy Cooperative School District. As a district, we have developed strategies to accommodate both in-school and at-home learning while being committed to the safest possible return of students and staff. In working towards this goal, we acknowledge and recognize there are limitations associated with creating a risk-free environment. While working to minimize risk to the greatest extent possible, each of us understands that there are a myriad of considerations that factor into making critical decisions for reopening schools. We also recognize that the ever-changing conditions require the Dairy Cooperative School District to prepare for multiple scenarios and maintain flexibility to move in and out of those scenarios when conditions necessitate. In this way, our task forces have carefully and comprehensively planned without being able to truly predict. The district task force team, one of 11 total task force teams, has thus developed a comprehensive plan for reopening schools. This plan is being presented tonight to the school board for their approval. Throughout the development process, the team has been continuously informed by other task force teams composed of community and civic leaders, school board members, teachers, staff, administrators, family members, medical professionals, food service, and transportation directors. The plan is based on extensive collaboration with and guidance from the Department of Education, local and state officials, and on available research. I extend my most sincere and deepest gratitude for the commitment, time, and passion that the task force members and our community at large continue to demonstrate. I encourage families to either email or call their children's schools or the SAU with questions, since it is best to move forward with accurate information. Please know we are here for you. As always, the ability and willingness to be respectful, flexible, and responsive in this dynamic culture is paramount to the success and well-being of our students, staff, and community. Mr. Minkle? Mr. Minkle, are you running the slides?
Okay, we're just pausing there. The Facebook sound apparently had gone down for a little bit, but it's now back up for everyone. All right, so supposedly we have everything working now. Livestream is up, it is being recorded, and potentially Facebook Live is also working. If anyone on Facebook, we're going to post a message. If they can't for some reason, then several people have already posted the livestream link. I would recommend going over to the livestream and watching it. But I think we do have Facebook at this point, so are we ready to pursue the presentation?
Yes.
All righty. Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank you for your patience, your kindness, and your tolerance. And we apologize for the inconvenience. Apologize for the inconvenience. Can you hear me now? Thank you. Thank you, Jen. Apologize for the inconvenience this may have caused you. So, we'll proceed. And just keep telling me if you can't hear me. I think I have it. To begin, I will read an excerpt from the executive summary from the roadmap to reopening schools, July 28th, 2020. The Dairy Cooperative School District Comprehensive Task Force recommends that the Derry School Board adopt Plan A: Completely reopening on-site with increased health and safety measures, and highlighted by a phased-in return to schools for the 2020-2021 school year. Although the task force membership's choice was not unanimous, a significant majority of members selected Plan A as the means to reopening schools in August. As a result of the ever-changing nature of the COVID-19 pandemic, the information included in and the ultimate operational success of Plan A are subject to change based on evolving circumstances, local and state data trends, and the district's ability to adequately staff each of our schools. It's important to note that at any time during the pandemic, if the COVID-19 landscape or data significantly change, the Derry School District will be prepared to transition from one plan to the other by communicating in advance with families to the greatest extent possible. However, the intention is to remain in Plan A based on guidance and recommendations from local and state health officials and is contingent upon adequate staffing. Plan A has yet to be voted on by the school board and is the recommendation being brought forth this evening for a vote. Reopening Plan A. The next section reviews the components of reopening Plan A defined by completely reopening on-site. Plan A allows for all students and staff to be on-site with increased health and safety measures described in more detail throughout this presentation. Plan A will begin with a gradual phase-in schedule for students to return to school. Students are scheduled to begin school through a one-week phase-in process beginning on August 31st, thus necessitating a school board vote this evening on a proposed revised calendar for the 2020-2021 school year. The specific phase-in process will be outlined in a subsequent slide this evening. An alternative remote learning plan located and explained on page 34 is an integral part of the roadmap to reopening schools plan. The alternative remote learning plan gives families who prefer their children not to participate in onsite instruction an option for them to learn remotely from home. This option will be discussed in greater detail later in this presentation. This is a really important slide, and you probably have seen it in the presentation before, two weeks prior at the school board meeting. It really speaks of collaboration from our stakeholders. And if you've gone through our plan, you've seen a number of district task forces, and this speaks to the collaboration and community connections that are integral in our work within the Dairy Cooperative School District. This is nothing new, but I think it's very, very important to highlight this collaboration and community connection part. This commitment to collaboration, contribution, and community is evident in the 11 district task force teams, some of whom have been working for months on reopening structures. Representatives from our stakeholder groups are with us this evening, and we are fortunate that they will join us in a panel discussion later on. Teams are composed based on the components of the roadmap to reopening schools and include stakeholders from the above categories working collaboratively for a common purpose. For example, individuals from our Community Leaders Task Force exchange information regularly regarding data trends associated with COVID-19. I am very, very confident that the partnership with these task force members and that with our school district consulting physician, Dr. Chris Peterson, will allow us to receive current notification with any new trends or spikes, including hospitalizations associated with COVID-19 with our area and state data. Dr. Peterson is available to consult with our school nurses and me before and after school and on Fridays, as well as many times in between. What were our considerations during the planning phases and how do we consider during our ongoing planning? And really, this slide highlights some of the documents and some of the advice that we took during planning and that we will continue to look at and take during our planning process, which really never ends. We looked at documents from the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services in the beginning, and really, they petered off to about one call per week, but initially, for the first couple of months, there were two calls per week with district leaders, with our Commissioner of Education, Frank Edelblut, weekly calls with other local superintendents. We looked for the guidance from New Hampshire Department of Education, and that recently came out in July, the New Hampshire Grades K-12 Back-to-School Guidance dated July 2020. We looked for guidance from our State of New Hampshire Governor, Sununu. We looked and relied on guidance from our Center for Disease Control, our newest updates, the American Academy of Pediatrics, our World Health Organization, and our reopening guidance plans from other states. We heavily relied on our other state plans prior to our plans coming out. Segments from those plans were very helpful in starting to formulate our plan, which took a very long time. And as I said, this is an evolving process, it's an evolving document. We also took into consideration our families' feedback from our survey that was given way back in June, when you really didn't have any information. About 86% of families said they were intending to send students back to school, and that was without a plan. If you recall, all of our sending districts to Pinkerton Academy sent out a survey, and about 86% of our dairy families said you would send your children back to school, and that was without any information. We understand that those numbers may have changed now, relied on some of that feedback as well. As well as we take into consideration your ability to balance childcare needs, the potential health concerns for both students and staff, and our students' social, emotional health needs, which will be explained explicitly later on. Dr. Garofalo will work on a slide on that later on, and we have Dr. Thibodeau, who will speak to that, as well as our physicians tonight. So what does completely opening on-site really mean? So our school facilities will be completely open. There will be increased health and safety measures. What do we mean by increased health and safety measures? How is that defined? Those increased health and safety measures are defined in our comprehensive plan that was put out on Sunday on the website and is available on our website. We understand that classrooms will look different. Normal is not normal. What we've done is take actions to promote student and staff safety in the best possible way. Increased health and safety measures include three to six feet social distancing inside classrooms, based on the Department of Education, New Hampshire Back-to-School Guidance, the American Association of Pediatrics, and the World Health Organization. Six-foot social distancing should be maintained in common areas, including hallways and our building entrances, offices, and restrooms. A requirement for face coverings, masks for students and staff. Obviously, there will be exceptions to that for students who are not required to wear face coverings and masks when seated at desks and tables within their cohort group. And Dr. Peterson and Dr. Heidu will explain the distancing requirement for and when students are not required to wear those. They will explain that distancing requirement later. And accommodations will be made, and I've had some calls about this from parents, and I appreciate it. They will be made for students based on individual needs. But there will be requirement for students and staff to wear face coverings and masks. That is supported by research, as we all know. There will be cohorting and grouping of students. Classrooms will be arranged to maximize physical distance between students, and all desks will be facing in the same direction with assigned seating. You will find a lot of these measures, and actually, most of them, if not all, in the New Hampshire Department of Education guidance. Hand hygiene protocols, we've talked about that, you have heard about hand hygiene being very, very important. We know the parents are practicing at home, we know families are practicing those hand hygiene protocols at home. We really, really appreciate what you're doing, by the way. It will just look differently in school, timing-wise. So we need to practice that through instruction and timing. So the hand hygiene protocols will include hand washing and sanitization protocols, and those will be in place, and those have to be taught. Attention to ventilation systems, very, very important in returning to school with health and safety measures. So that's through HVAC testing and increased airflow in classrooms and on school buses. Additional personal protective equipment, PPE for staff. Outdoor classes are encouraged as feasible. Additional walkie-talkies for outdoor use. Why? Because if you have additional outdoor classes, we need additional walkie-talkies for some classrooms and for some schools. Not all schools need them. Increased cleaning and disinfection measures aligned to CDC protocols. Jane Semard will address that later in depth. And daily health screening tool for staff, and we will do a parent guardian one, that you will complete a health screening tool for students. Some of these slides also refers to family and visitors. Visitors to any school facility will be required to wear a face covering or mask, and schools will detail their plans and will elaborate on visitors, and administrators will share these expectations with you in due time in their own plans, because each school has their own individual task force. We're going to get to the layers of health and safety protection. This slide was taken from a presentation done by New Hampshire State Epidemiologist, Dr. Benjamin Kahn. The importance of this visual is found in the systematic connections. We always talk about connections, right? Connections with students and staff and families and our community, really, really important. Well, here's another slide that really epitomizes the connections of the layers of protection for health and safety. And this is really to maintain student, staff, and eventually, and ultimately, our community health and safety. So although we are unable, as I've said in the introduction tonight, to guarantee zero risk, strategies have been taken and will continue to be taken to mitigate and minimize risk, and this is critical to planning and ongoing work. So the several layers of protection model that our New Hampshire State Epidemiologist refers to in this slide include our symptom and temperature screening of students and staff. Dr. Peterson will address this later in detail. Cloth face coverings and masks, which I've already spoken to as a requirement in our district, and there will be exceptions to that. Frequent cleaning and disinfecting, I've already spoken to that as well. Limiting group sizes and avoiding congregating. And what does that mean? That means that we need to have students and staff avoid congregating in hallways, entrances and exits of schools, courtyards. Things that were the past normal won't be the new normal. And those are just some examples that I'm giving you now. They're not all-inclusive. Hand hygiene, we've talked about that extensively, and I know you have at home, too. Much appreciated. Cohorting, grouping students and staff. And social distancing, I've referred to in the previous slide, and one of our presenters this evening, Lisa Long, will address this in further detail.
Can you hear me now? All right. So Plan A includes a one-week phase-in schedule, which is displayed up there, and the purpose for that is to allow students and staff to return to school gradually, which allows for us to focus on learning and practicing some new school-wide routines and procedures, such as the arrival process, the dismissal process, passing in the hall, lunch delivery, and other health and safety measures, such as face covering, social distancing, how to hand wash properly, and other hygiene instruction. So how does it work? On Monday, August 31st, students in grades pre-K 1 and 2, pre-K K 1 and 2, as well as grade 6, will begin school on-site. All other grades will begin school remotely. Wednesday, September 2nd, students in grades 3 and 7 will join grades pre-K through 2 and 6 on-site, which means grades 4, 5, and 8 will continue remotely for that week. Then Friday, September 4th, and Monday, September 7th, there is no school. So Tuesday, on September 8th, all grades pre-K through 8 would be on-site. And the school board is being asked to approve some of these adjustments and some other changes to the 2020-2021 calendar to accommodate that, and that will come later. So I've been asked to talk a little bit more about the classroom environment in Plan A. First of all, students will be organized in cohorts. As our state guidance indicates, cohort groupings in elementary school and middle school will naturally look different. So I will speak specifically to elementary school. Elementary school students will be organized with their classroom teacher. There will be an allowance if there needs some kind of small group specialized instruction, and some of those examples of that include small group special education classes, PACE classes, enhanced classes, and some other classes. When they leave their cohort to go to those specialized classrooms, we will increase their safety and health measures, such as, but not exclusively, such as wearing their mask the whole time they are there, as well as increasing the standard for social distancing when they leave their cohort. Kim Carpentino will speak to the middle school cohorting.
Thank you. So middle school cohorts will be slightly different than the elementary cohorts, because we do have more specialized classes at the middle school. So they'll be organized in four cohorts. They will travel to those four cohorts, but because of their specialized classes, they will leave their cohort, go to a specialized classroom, and then return to their cohort at different times throughout that day. So listed on those would be algebra, PACE, advanced math classes, and Math and ELA, small group, Math ELA, full-year Spanish, band and chorus. So therefore, those cohorts are not pure. Kids will be leaving and then returning to cohorts throughout the day. Again, we would also consider, or not consider, but we'd also be following increased health and hygiene practices.
Further description for the class environment under Plan A, besides cohorts. Social distancing of three to six feet in the classrooms. We did take the guidance from our state on that, and we actually set up some classrooms with three feet apart, which actually is a setup where nobody has room to even back up their chair. So nobody's really interested in three feet desk apart. Most of our desks will be somewhere between 4 and 1/2 and 6. There'll be protocols for hand washing, hygiene, and face covering masks. Teaching kids -- we already teach kids how to blow their nose. Teaching kids, we already teach kids how to blow their nose every once in a while, but we'll add, you know, how to do that when you have a mask on or when you can take your mask off and so forth. Speaking of masks, students will be required to wear face coverings or masks when they move around the classroom, where they may come closer than three feet to each other. But they can take breaks from their face masks when they are seated at their desks, which are distanced apart. In their cohort room, that is. In the beginning of the year, students will eat lunch in their cohort groups in the classroom or outside, if possible. The possibility of shifting lunches to the cafeteria or dining hall will be reevaluated and adjusted if the guidelines change and/or if there's available space. As far as Unified Arts in the elementary school, to begin with, Unified Arts will come to the cohort classrooms. And for middle school, those cohort groups would move to the UA classrooms, but they will stay with their cohort groups as much as possible. As far as the classroom design, we're following the guidance set to us, which includes desks facing the same direction, students appropriately spaced apart when seated at a table, students in assigned seats, minimal additional furniture in the classroom, as well as minimizing, if not eliminating, student-to-student sharing of materials. Students will, and it's mentioned here again, but I think we've mentioned that small group specialized instruction would continue with increased safety protocols. Onto health.
Thank you, Dr. Dancy. Can you hear me now? Okay. Health, students and staff. First of all, behind me here, Sue Linehan, our nurse team leader. I want to thank her for her collaboration with me on this, on the information on this slide. Identify high-risk individuals. Staff will self-identify to Kathy Kennedy, our Human Resource Director, and will be asking parents and guardians to, they will be receiving an email in the near future discussing this, and will be looking for them to take their children's temperature and check for symptoms and contact the school. And the nurse will have a discussion with them. Tracking of symptoms. Nurses are in the process of developing a tracking system in their electronic documentation system called SNAP, School Nurse Assessment Program. Nurses contact the state already. And the New Hampshire DHHS, Department of Health and Human Services, daily to report numbers about everything health-related. Symptomatic individuals. Protective stance from the CDC and the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services is the 10-1 rule, which is 10 days have passed since symptoms first appeared. There is approval of those, approval, that's not the word I'm looking for, improvement of those systems. And at least one day or 24 hours has passed since a temperature of at least 100.0 degrees. Response to positive cases. Nurses call the state, New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services, and the state does the contact tracing. They are responsible for that, and they determine if and who gets quarantined. District sends email to staff, students, and families to make everybody aware, in full disclosure, that there was a positive case. Travel or asymptomatic individuals currently. And as you've been hearing so far tonight, things change on a daily and weekly basis. But currently, if you leave the New England states, you must quarantine for 14 days. But not for essential workers, which include nurses and other educators along with healthcare professionals and so forth. Screening of students. Parents, guardians are expected to screen their own children, keep them home and notified to nurse if there are symptoms, and reminders will be sent home regularly. And screening of staff. Staff fill out an online self-assessment daily. Training for staff and students, ongoing announcements, coordinated with our consulting physician, Dr. Chris Peterson over here. Training sessions and documents outlining monitoring of symptoms, hand washing, use of face masks, and so much more. It's okay, we've gone to the next slide. I just want to, there was an article from July 23rd from the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC. And they write about weighing the risks versus the benefits of in-person education. The article was called "The Importance of Reopening America's Schools This Fall." And they state, "As families and policymakers make decisions about their children returning to school, it is important to consider the full spectrum of benefits and risks of both in-person and virtual learning options. The best available evidence indicates if children become infected, they are far less likely to suffer severe symptoms. Based on current data, the rate of infection among younger schoolchildren and from students to teachers has been low, especially if proper precautions are followed. There have also been few reports of children being the primary source of COVID-19 transmission among family members. This is consistent with data from both virus and antibody testing, suggesting that children are not the primary drivers of COVID-19 spread in schools or in the community. At the same time, the harms attributed to closed schools on the social, emotional, and behavioral health, economic well-being, and academic achievement of children in both the short and long term are well-known and significant. Further, the lack of in-person educational options disproportionately harms low-income and minority children and those living with disabilities. These students are far less likely to have access to private instruction and care and far more likely to rely on key school-supported resources like food, programs, special education services, counseling, and after-school programs to meet basic developmental needs." And that is all from the CDC, who, in my humble opinion, tends to err on the side of caution more than any other agency that I've read reports from. As we lead into the social, emotional, mental health slide, I've got some information from the New Hampshire Department of Education Grades K-12 Back-to-School Guidance. First of all, I want to remind people, our superintendent, Dr. Mary Ann Connors-Crickorian, emphasized the need for staff to stay in touch with our students and families during the remote learning process so that no child would be lost. She was specifically referring to students' social, emotional, mental health. And in the Grades K-12 Back-to-School Guidance from the New Hampshire Department of Education, they emphasize that schools will need to model a sense of calmness and self-assurance to their students as they enter the school year. It is recommended that the first week of school focus on stabilizing students by spending time building relationships, modeling expectations, and implementing support systems. Educators and staff should also be prepared to discuss the COVID-19 pandemic with students and the importance for changes to normal, expected school operations. And I do believe that as a whole, our staff is exceptional at reaching your children and making them feel comfortable and making them feel at home in our schools. So the need for additional social, emotional support. Dr. Kristin Thibodeau, who is right behind me also. She is our chief psychologist, and I want to thank her for her input into this particular slide. She's been contacting local colleges to line up counselor interns and has been working on grants to receive funds to support students and staff's social, emotional, mental health. Help staff, families, and students access resources. The Derry Cooperative School District psychologist and counselor website. Referrals of local mental health counselors and therapists. Preparations of live Zoom trainings and workshops for families, students, and staff. Continuing communication with families in the development and implementation of family workshops. Ongoing outreach to our students and families from our teaching staff, first and foremost. Also, and especially from our counselors. A Zoom video for families to help them to discuss the return to school with their children that Dr. Thibodeau is working on. And reference sheets that she's also working on regarding social, emotional look-fours to help teachers in referring students who may need to speak with their counselor. Connections with community mental health providers and researching additional resources and supports. Mental health providers, especially the local Center for Life Management, and specifically Director of Child, Adolescent, and Family Clinical Services, Sandra Norton, who has been working closely with our superintendent, as well as Dr. Thibodeau, and will continue to do so. Staff trainings. Dr. Thibodeau will deliver a three-hour self-care training. Will live Zoom with approximately 50 staff members at a time during the first week of staff professional development on topics of coping skills, resilience, and observing those social, emotional behavior cues. She will provide that reference sheet I spoke to. And the beginning-of-the-year trainings will be followed up during the year at things like the staff meetings. Create a culture where each student feels connected to at least one adult in the school. This is something that the Derry Cooperative School District and every school in our district has emphasized for a number of years. It's why we brought Bill Preble and the Culture Club into three of our schools last year. It's on hold for now, we know. But this will start with each school having a version of morning meeting, which will have an emphasis on the social, emotional development of our students and will be discussed during the school-support team meetings to make sure that all students are connected. Thank you.
Okay. Cleaning and sanitizing. We just want to talk a little bit about the protocols that we're putting in place and the things that we're doing. Some of them, we've been doing all summer long while custodians have still been in the building and some of the staff. Custodians will be following an enhanced cleaning schedule that's based on the CDC cleaning and disinfecting guidelines. That's really what's driving all of our decision-making when it comes to custodial cleaning for when you return. All of the products that we'll be using are EPA-approved. We will also have them available to staff in classrooms as well. Areas that are frequently touched surfaces, for example, tables, doorknobs, light switches, desks, toilets, faucets, and sinks, will be cleaned and disinfected throughout the day. The district will be using electrostatic sprayers for disinfecting. We had one for each school back in March, and we have an additional 20 that will be here in the school district. So if you are not aware of what they are, they are an electrostatic sprayer that will disperse the disinfectant over a large area in a much shorter amount of time. And the disinfectant that we use has a 10-minute effectiveness time. So custodians can use those on walls or, they would use them on classrooms at the end of the day. We would not be using the sprayer when there are staff around or students around. But they could do them in between classrooms if the room was going to be closed for at least 10 minutes or the area would be closed for 10 minutes. We have over 300 hand sanitizer units that are being installed before school resumes, and they will be installed in each classroom, as well as common areas, hallways. They'll be outside the gymnasiums, the cafeterias. They will be inside doorways when you come in from recess. So they will be all over the school district. Custodians recently had training, actually, it was last Wednesday, from our cleaning vendor, from Cleanorama, and they came down and taught them the new CDC guidelines and procedures. We also had Dave Minkel videotape the training so that we can have it for future use for any additional staff or staff that wasn't available at that time. They'll also be coming down and doing another training, at least twice from now until the time that school starts, to make sure that the custodians who were not here that day will have the same training, and they will give enhanced training to make sure that they are all clear on what our expectation is and our cleaning protocols for when school resumes. We will also be having floor markings and signage to identify six-feet distancing, to identify where the hand sanitizers are. There'll be signage for hand washing. There'll be a lot of signage throughout the building that will be in place prior to the opening. PPE will also be provided to all staff, as well as other materials for staff. For example, if you can see that clear desk shield, there will be a lot of desk shields throughout the district. Some of them are smaller than that. They're two feet, I think there might be two feet on each side. Those are a little bit larger, so there's different-sized ones that'll be throughout the district that will be available for use for classrooms, for small group instruction. So those will be in place prior to the start of school. We also are hiring additional custodial staff to ensure that we can have additional help during the day for disinfecting, cleaning, and we will also need additional staff for the night shift to disinfect and clean the school at the end of the day. For water and ventilation systems, we will continue to do required testing for water sources. As you know, all of our water source is town water, with the exception of East Derry. We will be installing a sink in the nurse's office at East Derry. They did not have one prior to this. They've only had one in the restroom in that area, not one in the open space. So that will be installed prior to the return. We'll also be ensuring that all elementary school classrooms have working sinks. There were a couple that were not working, but they will be used for hand washing only. We will be installing additional water filling stations. Currently, there are 11 of them throughout the school district. And those are the water filling stations where you can put a water bottle up to it. Again, we would be making sure that we are doing continued disinfecting throughout the day on those, even the water stations. As far as ventilation, we have a mechanical contractor who is going throughout the district, assessing and verifying units and running, making sure that they're running according to specifications, and ensuring that we have adequate airflow through the units as they're designed to operate. And additionally, making repairs as that contractor goes throughout the building. We are also adjusting our units to allow for 20% more fresh air intake in each of the buildings. We are also changing the HVAC filters to MERV 13 filters, which are higher-efficiency filters, and then we'll be changing those quarterly. For an example, the cost to change each of those filters quarterly, the total cost to do that is $11,000. So just to give you an idea of the increased costs that we're expending to make sure that we have good airflow and that our filters are based on the recommendations that we're getting from state and local officials. For child nutrition, we're going to be starting the new year serving in our classrooms, and we'll be using the same packaging that we were using for our summer remote feeding program. So if any of you had come through, we mainly did it West Running Brook. We started out here and west, and then moved to Dairy Village, and then ultimately, just West Running Brook. But we had our meals prepackaged. All of the fruits and vegetables were individually wrapped or packaged, and they were in a clear plastic bag with individually-wrapped utensils. And we had entree options for our students. So as they came through the line, we had a grab-and-go system in their vehicle, and they would just pick the entree, and we'd put the hot entree or cold entree. and they would just pick the entree and we'd put the hot entree or cold sandwich into the plastic bag and then, um, hand it to the, the parent or the child. We will be using that same packaging and that same, um, format while we're, um, feeding the students in the classroom. It's easy to use, um, there'll be less packaging. And when talking to Susan Baroskis, our Director of Child Nutrition today, she was even looking at some type of a paper mat that, um, students could put on their desk to put their food on top of. So we will be working on all of those. Staff will be bringing the meals to the classroom on rolling carts and we do have to purchase additional carts in order to do that. And we are trying to have a touchless system for the student card information. So we will either be entering it, um, manually on a, we actually just got new iPads, handheld iPads, in order for the, um, food service staff to key in their identification card. Or they also have handheld scanners that they can scan the card and they'll be bringing the carts up to the classroom and handing out food there. We are also currently upgrading our, our financial software for our meal program for Heartland and moving to the Mosaic, which is a, a cloud-based software, which is not only going to help our system, but it's also going to have an online ordering component, which we will be working on. And I, I don't believe it's going to be up and operational for the first two weeks of school. So right now, we're coming up with a plan on how we're going to order our meals and we will make sure we communicate that to staff and parents before we return. But that's, um, an ultimate goal is to have online ordering when necessary. We're also going to have meals available to students who are, um, doing the remote learning option. So if students are learning from home, they still have access to our food service program and we would make meals available to those students and they would, um, come to the school and pick up a meal just like they did in, in the summertime. Uh, we would have them call ahead or order ahead and we would have a schedule to pick up for that, to make sure that we are not missing any of our free and reduced students or any student that wants to participate in our food service program. Thank you.
Hi. Can you hear me? Kind of?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm sensing a thing. Okay. Um, so as you could probably imagine, instruction has been a primary focus throughout this entire, um, planning process. And we have taken into consideration feedback from families, teacher reflections, and state and local guidance. Um, much thought was put into how we could continue to deliver quality education for our students. The New Hampshire grades K through 12 back-to-school guidance from the governor and New Hampshire, excuse me, Department of Education, recommended establishing a work group that looked at instructional priorities and how instructional practices could be modified to support students. Some curriculum teams have been working throughout the summer to create district curriculum guides to inform instructional planning while also taking into account concepts covered during remote learning in the spring and those that might need to be revisited in the fall. During remote learning last spring, teachers implemented many innovative instructional methods and it's important to continue to build upon this momentum of integrating face-to-face instruction and technology. For instance, many teachers were utilizing Screencastify to pre-record their focus or mini-lesson, which allowed students to have access to district instruction or direct instruction of concepts as many times as they needed. They could even pause the video at any point to practice step by step along with the teacher. Students also got a lot of experience using Google Classroom where they could view and submit assignments and get real-time feedback from their teacher as they worked. Remote learning elements such as these could potentially be continued even when students are back in the classrooms. It will also be important to use some face-to-face instructional time to help better prepare students for the possibility of transitioning to either a hybrid or completely remote model. Along with planning for instruction, it was also important to consider local and state assessments. The back-to-school guidance advised school districts to take time early in the year to assess where students were regarding their learning and better plan or in to, in order to better plan delivery of instruction aligned with their current knowledge and readiness. With this in mind, an assessment calendar is being developed to outline specific assessments for the fall, including but not limited to the NWEA and the Fountas and Pennell Benchmark. In addition to local assessments, the state is requiring grades four through eight to take the New Hampshire statewide assessment interim assessments in the ELA and math by the end of October. An additional information regarding instruction can be found on the district's roadmap to reopening schools document beginning on page 29. Thank you.
Good evening. Good eve- good evening. Um, in order to, in, to accommodate the needs of remote learning and any other type of, of, uh, learning, using technology, we have chosen to adopt a one-to-one, uh, model for our students. And we had already begun that last year with our fifth grade and it was on a three-to-four year plan in order to do that, but we have accelerated that. We've purchased enough devices that we should be able to put a Chromebook in the hands of every child, first grade through eighth grade. We're going to be repurposing the teacher MacBooks as we exchange those out and placing them in the kindergarten rooms. We're also, we're making them extremely easy to use so that when you open it up, it goes right to where you want it to be, similar to a Chromebook. Grades three through hu- eight will be encouraged to take these devices home on a daily basis. We're buying a nice sleeve that has a, that has a strap on it that they can carry it in. It's a nice, secure, uh, jacket for it. Grades K through two are going to leave their devices at school, uh, until at which time we would ever go to remote learning and then they would take them home in order to facilitate that. The reason they're going to leave them at school is so that the teachers can work with them in learning how to use the devices and to be able to use the remote learning tools that we are purchasing. We are, we have purchased, uh, many software device, uh, software packages that we're going to be introducing this year that we used last year. Sarah mentioned Screencastify. We're also, we also have a few others. We purchased also a district-wide license for Pickup Patrol. Some of our buildings are already using this. It's a way to let, uh, the secretary at a school know whenever the students' plans for transportation are changing, but they've added a new, um, a new, uh, part of their program for the COVID-19, which includes a screening. So if we ever decide to use that tool, it's available to us. One other thing is that we are upgrading the bandwidth in all of our buildings. It was already planned to move to a dark fiber network here within the town and bring two gigabytes of internet access to the buildings. That, uh, isn't going to happen until November, but we are working with First Light right now to go ahead and upgrade the bandwidth that we have here to accommodate these other devices. That's all I have.
Here it comes. Right? Testing my patience. I think I did pretty good. So the alternative remote learning plan, which we've mentioned a couple of times, I just want to give you some details on that. This is a plan for families who choose not to send their child back to school. And depending on the students and teachers who are involved in that plan, those remote class, well, first of all, they'll be assigned a certified teacher. I skipped that line. But depending on who the teachers are and the students, those remote classes may be multi-age classes. They may represent multiple schools in a class. And also their assigned teacher may be from a different school than they normally attend. Instruction will be a combination of synchronous, meaning scheduled times during a Zoom, and asynchronous, meaningful, engaging remote activities or assignments. Some of the available remote tools would include Google Classroom, Zoom, Screencastify, Edmentum Exact Path, and Newzella. Students opting for the alternative remote plan will be enrolled for the trimester. We're allowing families to change that decision until Friday, September 18th. Special circumstances may be considered at the school level if a change needs to happen before the end of the trimester. However, once staffing arrangements are made, it may be difficult to move until that trimester is over. And just in awareness, there are other options other than the alternative remote learning plan from the district if you do not want to send your child back to school, such as V-Lax, private school, homeschooling. Those are options as well.
Can you hear me? All right. I'm the lucky one. Transportation. The New Hampshire Department of Education Back-to-School Guidance suggests that families should be encouraged to seek private, individual, or small group transportation. We are supporting that encouragement and that recommendation. However, um, when families are choosing to drive their students to and from school, we are asking that they screen their children for symptoms, that children with symptoms do not ride the bus. And for, um, currently we are working with First Student to reorganize bus routes to reduce the number of students on some of the buses. So for those students riding the school buses, once again, we're asking those families to screen their children for symptoms and that students with symptoms do not ride the bus. We're asking that they wear face cover, or mandating that they wear face coverings, masks while boarding, riding, and exiting the bus. That students sit facing forward. We're trying to maximize space between riders. However, at this time, we are saying the maximum number of students is to proceed. But in that process of working with First Student and trying to maximize the number of, the, uh, space rather, between riders, we're looking at reorganizing those routes to do that. So if we can decrease the number of students riding any single school bus, which we believe we can, try and balance out some of our routes to have fewer students on those buses and increase the distance between those students. We're asking, uh, we are assigning seats for students. We will be having siblings ride together in the same seat. When students arrive to school and when they are departing school to get on the school bus, we are ensuring that there will be social distancing prior to that embarking and disembarking. Students seated on the bus will be seated six feet from the driver, so one or two seats behind the driver will be empty. When students arrive to school and when they are departing school, we will be, um, we will be staggering the boarding and disembarking as well as using multiple school access points to limit the interaction between students when they're disembarking the bus or when they're leaving school to get on the bus. We will have students wash or sanitize their hands prior to leaving school and getting on the bus. We'll be sure to, um, communicate all of the expectations with families and with staff, communicate all of the procedures that are expected for our students and organizing their transportation, their embarking and disembarking the school buses. Our bus drivers will be wearing face coverings, masks during non-driving times. However, we are recommending that they wear them during driving times and whenever safe, uh, whenever it's safe to do so, they will be wearing masks. We will be ventilating the buses by opening the windows whenever possible, weather permitting. In between every run, the drivers will be sanitizing the commonly touched surfaces, tops of seats, handrails, et cetera, uh, disinfecting those, um, spaces on the bus in between every run. Also, buses will be, uh, disinfected twice daily. So after all of the morning runs and afternoon runs, each bus will be disinfected, uh, at First Student at their location. Once again, we'll be sharing and communicating the information and the expectations regarding school bus ridership with all of our families.
Okay. Now with the reopening plan, there are going to be budgetary implications and, um, we can see here that we're going to look to have permanent substitutes, permanent nursing substitutes, lunch and recess monitors, as well as custodians. I did not put that on there, but they're going to be, um, additional staff when it comes to custodians. And we also have increased hand sanitizer. The cost for the hand sanitizer is within our contract. However, we did purchase a, a large amount of hand sanitizer, approximately $16,000 worth of san- hand sanitizer in the last fiscal year when we were, um, when COVID pretty much hit and we had to stock the warehouse to be prepared if we were going to stay in, in school. So we will be using, um, that hand sanitizer as well as the ones that will be in the dispensers. Like I mentioned earlier, we purchased personal protect, uh, protective equipment. Uh, we did order, um, washable face masks for every staff member. We also ordered three washable face masks for every student. Additionally, we ordered, um, face masks that are the shield, but they also have a cloth material on the bottom so that staff members, um, when they're teaching, so that children can see their, what they're saying, they could, they have the option to use those as well. We ordered quite a few of those. Uh, those were $39 apiece for the, the ones with the mask under, the cloth material underneath. Um, additionally, we also ordered, we do have, um, regular face shields. We have thermometers. We have gloves. We have, um, pretty much anything when it comes to PPE. And, um, some of the PPE, we were able to get at no cost from Homeland Security through the state for our summertime programs and staff that have been working in the building for the summer. But other than that, we've, um, the district is contributing to the cost. All of the cost for PPE, ones that we've had to pay for, will be, um, done using our CARES Act funding or our FEMA funding. FEMA is a 75% contribution from FEMA, 25% from the district. The remaining 25%, we can use, um, towards our CARES Act and apply for that, for the remaining 25%. The one-to-one student computing devices are the Chromebooks. We purchased 1,400 Chromebooks. Um, we spent $277,000 on Chromebooks for students, which is $175,000 more than our budget and that will be also applied for through our CARES Act grant. We also had to have jackets for the one-to-one Chromebook, uh, devices. So we've purchased 3,300 of those and that's at a cost of $22,000. Again, we'll be applying for federal funds for that. The filtering software for all of those one-to-one devices, again, is an increase on this year's budget and that increase, um, the new cost for that would be $20,000, which a portion of that is an increase over the current, um, budgeted year. We're also going to be purchasing hotspots for families that don't currently have access to the internet so that the students can, um, still have remote learning. Again, the masks and students and staff that I mentioned. Uh, we also have purchased outdoor tents, one for every school. I believe they are 30 by 45, so they're a pretty good-sized tent. They have been approved through the Dairy Fire Department, so they have the appropriate fire rating. They do not have sides to them, but the tents will be, um, ours because we're going to purchase them and they will be here prior to the start of school. And the district can use those for outdoor learning or for an outdoor learning classroom or for, um, if they want to go outside and have lunch or for any other use to have fresh air and be outside. And then we would take them down when, um, the weather starts to turn and then we'll put them back out in the spring. Um, we are purchasing tables and chairs to go outside in those tents. We do have additional cameras that are on our We do have additional cameras that are on our list to be done because we obviously want to have the additional property, the tents, to be monitored. We're also ordering additional walkie-talkies for the schools. Each of those is approximately $500 apiece, and then they have the base, so those are going to be an additional cost. All of these things are being applied for through federal funds. If we have to remove furniture from any of the classrooms, we will have storage available for for that furniture. And we're also looking at disinfecting the buses, which would be done daily by the bus company or a contractor that they hire out for, but that's an approximate cost yearly of a little over $39,000 to disinfect the buses every day. Additionally, we're having an additional cost of translation services. We do have a outstanding ESOL department, which is for our speakers of other languages, and any type of remote learning requires some students to have that information translated for them. And then there's the additional cost of the desk shields that we mentioned, and the additional signage that we would have throughout the district. The signage and the carpet stickers, the flooring stickers, all of that was approximately $17,000 for signage. Again, all taken from, will be applied for through federal funds.
Okay, so what are our next steps? You're probably glad this is the last page of the presentation, I'm sure. So thank you for your patience once again. By July 31st, we will be sending a family form out. And what will that family form entail? It will ask the student's name, school, and grade level, and families will be asked to select an option, and that is obviously dependent upon the school board's decision this evening. You will also be asked to select a mode of transportation, in essence, you know, bus or no bus. What will be next in terms of communication? As I referred to before, we have several task forces, so you will not only be communicated by district-wide, but you'll also be communicated by, as our schools do so efficiently, and I believe so wonderfully, school-specific communication as well as district-specific communication, once we know what option has been decided upon. There will be family education information going out in regards to, but not limited to, health and safety, social, emotional, mental health, as Austin referred to, and Dr. Thibodeau will refer to later, technology, but those aren't the only areas by far. Those are just some examples. And we will continually work with our task forces to not only meet, plan, and as always, adjust to meet students, staff, and community needs. I want to give a special thanks to our leadership team for working so hard to get this presentation together. There's the plan that I spoke about before, and there's also the presentation. Do parts merge? Absolutely. But I do want to give a special thanks and my deepest gratitude to our leadership team who worked endlessly and tirelessly on this presentation to make sure that it was run smoothly tonight and to provide as much information possible to those of you here and at home. Again, I urge parents to call us at any time, and either at the school level or the SAU level, and we are, as I said, always there for you. At this time, I know our panelists have been waiting very patiently, and I know some of you need to leave sooner than others. So first of all, I'd like to introduce our moderator tonight, Josh Borden, our town counselor. Josh, thank you for being here this evening with us. Josh will run our light system, so I appreciate it. Again, that, I believe, I really take pride in our town-school-district relationship. I believe it's very strong. And Josh, again, thank you for being here. So first of all, tonight, we are going to start, and our panelists, with our panelists, with Dr. Chris Peterson. He's our district consulting physician and pediatrician at London Dairy Pediatrics. Dr. Matthew Haidoo, and he's a pediatrician at Elliott Pediatrics in Wyndham, and he's also a parent on one of our task forces. And Susan Linehan, who is our nurse at South Range School and our nurse team leader. So they will address some of the health questions. And parents and families, thank you for sending so many questions in. They were used to not only frame and modify the plan that we have been working on for literally months, and not only that, but they were also used to frame our presentation, and we couldn't answer every question individually. So what our panelists will do this evening is work on thematic, the thematics of those questions. So without further ado, we have Dr. Peterson, Dr. Haidoo, and Susan Linehan.
Sue, hello, can you hear me? It's hot. I'll be brief. It's good to see a lot of familiar faces, and for those of you who don't know me, my name's Chris Peterson. I'm a pediatrician and been a child advocate for more than 30 years now. And so I'd like to give, spend a few minutes just giving some general comments, and then answer two general theme questions that have come in from the questions you have sent in, and then my colleague, Dr. Haidoo, will answer another two questions. First again, thank you for coming out tonight and sharing your views. We value what you have to say and will respect your opinions. What we have to say tonight, Matt and I, is data-based, and the data comes from the CDC, the Academy of Pediatrics, the World Health Organization, and the state guidelines. We, Dr. Haidoo and I, are not paid employees of the district. We're consultants. That allows us to speak truth to power, and I can assure you that that's heard by this administration. And those truths that we speak are evidence-based. Dr. Haidoo and I both have skin in this game, in that we have children that go to schools in Dairy. So the goal of the district has always been to educate in the safest environment. That hasn't changed, but as you've heard tonight, the environment has changed. The school that your children will go back to is not the school they left in March. Sure, physically and structurally, it's the same, but the way that process is going to work is different. The infectious disease reporting mechanisms we'll be using have been in place for decades. We, the school district, have been reporting to the state, as well as other school districts, a number of infectious diseases for years. That hasn't changed. What has changed is the name of the germ and the way this germ works, which is very different than some of the other germs that we have seen in the past. The district's desire has been and continues to be to create a safe environment for our teachers and our staff. We value the concerns of parents, teachers, and staff, and we are not naive nor ignorant of your worries. We all have worries in these times. However, the CDC, the Academy of Pediatrics, the state guidelines, all support reopening of schools. The Dairy School District is not alone in its reopening plan. Districts around our community are also going forward with reopening plans. They're different, some with strengths, some with non-strengths compared to ours. And what that should say to you is that we have no clear, absolute, perfect path forward. But the fact that we are reopening our plan speaks the uncertainty that we face. I can assure you that as things go forward, we'll continue to monitor and change and give our input to the district in order to keep our students and our staff safe. The overarching, overarching data, which we base the soundness of reopening, include in the state of New Hampshire, no evidence of increased community spread of COVID. If that changes, we're going to know, and we're going to change what we're doing. Local data from Parkland Medical Center further substantiates how low our community spread is. Evidence that face coverings and face masks are effective means of reducing spread of virus, and the evidence that adequate social distancing, defined by the World Health Organization, the Academy of Pediatrics, and the state guidelines, as three to six feet, decrease the spread of COVID-19. Furthermore, data suggests that children are at low risk for catching COVID. Of all of the positive COVID cases in the U.S. between January and May of this year, the 0-9 age group represented 3% of all of those positive cases. And the 10-19 age group was roughly 7.5%. Just doesn't happen a lot in children, thankfully. Similarly, those children who do not, who do contract COVID tend to do very, very well. That's not to say that our focus is child-centric, student-centric. I'll speak to the risks for teachers and the staff in a moment. But children in the 0-9 age group represent 4% of all hospitalizations, again, in that same time period, January to May in the U.S. That includes ICU. Children 0-9 accounted for only .7% of ICU admissions in the, in the U.S., and sadly, .1% of the deaths. The 10-19 age group was only 2.5%, even less than the 0-9 age group because of that infancy range, and we know that that's much higher. 2.5% of all hospitalizations, again, including the ICU, .4% of the ICU admissions, and the same death rate, sadly, .1%. These data suggest children are at low risk, not only for contracting COVID, but also low risk for bad outcomes. The district's plan to optimize social distancing by maintaining at least four feet between students and classrooms further mitigates risk, as does requiring masks or face coverings be worn at school, and encouraging cough-and-sneeze etiquette, requiring hair washing, eliminating or reducing shared materials, and the environmental cleaning that we've heard about. These interventions not only reduce, reduce the risk for our students, but they're also reducing the risk for our staff and teachers. I, we, realize there is reasonable concern that teachers, some of whom by age or underlying condition, may have increased concern of the school environment. As I just spoke of, children are a low-risk group in the context of contracting COVID-19. And in good fortune, nature has provided that younger the student, the lower the risk, which dovetails nicely with the ability to capably wear a face mask. Insomuch that it's going to be harder to keep a kindergartner in a mask, but that kindergartner is going to be at lower risk of having COVID. Similarly, a 12-year-old might be at higher risk for infection, but they're going to be more capable of wearing a mask. Staff and teachers will be required to wear masks in the school. Staff and teachers will enable, will be enabled to maximize social distancing in their teaching environments, and currently, New Hampshire is enjoying very low community transmission. I truly see your child's school or your place of employment as a lower-risk environment than other social gatherings to which staff and teachers are most likely, most likely attending, such as grocery stores, Walmarts, restaurants, hairstylists. Why? Because everyone has to wear a mask or a face covering at school. Because everyone in the school is working to the same end, a safe school environment, and because social distancing is built into the system. Because the folks you're around, the students, are at lower-risk pool than the folks at a grocery store, or a hair salon, or a restaurant, and because deep cleaning will be happening regularly. Well, I want to continue on the mitigation strategy being used by the district. I want to be respectful at times, as well as answer the themes from the questions which were sent in, one of which was about face coverings and masks being required in school. This point dovetails with my comments regarding the strategy to reduce the staff risk, whom, by the way, the district needs to keep in the schools open. Remember, the district has abundant reason to maintain staff integrity, and to speak directly to the importance of face coverings and masks in the mitigation of COVID. There's no doubt face coverings and masks decrease the risk of COVID transmission. But let me just back up for a second and speak to the differences between masks and face coverings. Face coverings are made of non-medical fabric, and they're effective at protecting others from your droplets. Masks, on the other hand, are made from medical, are medical devices which protect others from you, but also protect you from others. Surgeons have been wearing masks all day for years. They're safe, and they're effective. A medical article that I just want to spend a second on from the CDC's Morbidity Mortality Weekly Review reports two hairstylists from the same salon in Missouri who worked for eight and five days respectfully while symptomatic with COVID. Both of these individuals tested positive for COVID. They served 139 clients in the period of time where the hairstylist were symptomatic. The stylist and all of the clients wore masks or face coverings at the appointments, which lasted 15 to 45 minutes. The interaction between a hairstylist and a client is defined as high-risk due to close proximity and the extended length of time. Of the 139 clients, none became symptomatic of COVID, and of the 67 tested, none had positive tests. And to just to flesh out the details on these folks, the mean client age was 52, with a range of 21 to 93. Roughly half of them wore face coverings, roughly half of them wore surgical masks, a handful wore N95s. Masks and face coverings work. Even when social distancing is not practical, masks and face coverings are effective. Students will be required to wear masks or face coverings, staff and teachers will be required to wear masks or face coverings. The second general question that was sent in, general thematic piece of the questions that were sent in, was really around what happens if there is a COVID positive in the class? So what does that mean for the rest of the population? Specifically, who will be quarantined? And I got to say, the bottom line, it depends. It depends on what the DHHS is saying to us. They have a liaison that they're going to link to all schools. We call them, we talk to them about what's going on, they help us make those decisions. It is not a given that a whole class will be quarantined in the event that a student or teacher is positive, because factors such as age of students, where the younger, the less risk, mask adherence within a classroom, where the teachers, staff, students wearing their masks or face, or face coverings, social distancing. If a student is positive on the left side of the classroom, well, the assigned seating is followed, then most likely, students on the right side don't need to be quarantined. The district will work closely with the medical community, its medical consultants, and more, most importantly, with the state to assess who needs to be quarantined. If a student is quarantined, they would, of course, pivot to remote learning to maintain instruction. In the event of a COVID-positive member of school community, the case will be reviewed and recommendations made directly to the teachers, staff, and parents of the affected students. One final note. We, as a community, are relying on each other to make the right choices. The Northeast is enjoying a low community spread, and one theory is because we've been really good about wearing masks. As our students, our children, return to school, we'll be relying on students' families, staff, and teachers to make the right choice on when to go to school and when to stay home, when to quarantine after travel. Student families are essential partner in the screening their children prior to sending them to school. I know this is an enormous ask and a huge burden of trust, but rest assured, we can spot-check through the school, and teachers will still be able to use the school nurses as resources if they're concerned about a child and their symptoms. Again, thank you for coming out tonight and working with the district as we find the best path forward to teach our students while keeping them and our staff safe. Thank you. We'll have questions. We'll have questions afterwards, but now I'd like to turn this over to my esteemed colleague, Dr. Heiduk.
For those of you that don't know me, Matt Heiduk, pediatrician, works in Wyndham. Known Chris for 14 years now, so we work well together and share a lot of thoughts on the situation. So, two of the most common themes that I encountered during the parent questions were, why should we take the risk of sending our kids back to school? What's the benefit of having them in school versus remote learning? And if kids do go to school, won't they spread COVID amongst each other and then bring COVID home and spread it among their families? Let me start by setting realistic expectations. COVID transmission will not be zero in the schools. It's a fantastic goal. We're going to work as hard to that as we can, but that's not a realistic expectation. The good thing is that our best information is that while kids can become infected, they are much less likely to pass the illness on to other children and to other adults. One study in a school in Australia followed 18 students and staff that were diagnosed with COVID. They had close contact with 735 other students and 138 staff members. Two students and zero staff contracted COVID, and it wasn't known if those students contracted it in the school or in the community. But it did show, at least in that case, there was a very low transmission rate. Studies in China and Europe have also suggested that children were less likely than adults to spread COVID in the home. So if a child brought COVID into the home, it was much less likely that other family members would contract the illness. In reading through the questions, some parents did bring up more recent information regarding spread in children, especially a study that was in the news out of South Korea. This study suggested that there was increased spread in older children from 10 to 19 years of age, but confirmed the kids under 10 do show significantly less spread than adults. I do think this study has flaws. The study was advertised as large, headline stating that it consisted of 65,000 people. But the study actually started with only 5,700 index cases. Those are the first person that has the illness that you track beyond to see who they infected. But only 2.2% of that 5,700 were actually the important 10 to 19-year-old group that we're looking at. That's 124 kids. We need to see more robust data, especially in this age set, and we need to see this age set broken down. Other studies split this age group into 10 to 14 and 15 to 19, and there's a large difference between transmission in those two groups, it seems. I don't believe that this one study is powerful enough to override all of those prior to it. As Chris stated previously, it is New Hampshire's current low rate of infection and community transmission that puts us in a position to open the schools. Starting with a very low number of infections is the key to keeping students and staff safe. If we were in Florida with their high rate of infection, I would not support the opening of school. New Hampshire's in a good position, and we should take advantage of that while we are able. The American Academy of Pediatrics does recommend that students return to school in the safest manner possible. The reason for this is that there are risks that remote learning can pose. A recent report in Pediatrics showed multiple concerns from parents since the start of COVID. 14% reported a decline in their patients', in their children's behavioral health, and 48% reported declines in their family's overall well-being. We need to remember that remote learning invites its own significant risks to the mental health, academic progress, socialization, and nutrition of students. It especially worries me about missed cases of child abuse if the students are in their homes and never come into school to have people check on them. I think that's a big concern. All of these risks must be weighed against the risk of COVID, and that is an assessment that needs to be made by each family. Now, the one thing I know with certainty is that all of this data's going to change. Some of what we believe now will be proven wrong. Infection rates in the state will increase. It is imperative that the district be ready to adjust when new, solid information leads us in a different direction, or if plans we have in place are not working. Let's not forget the teachers during this time. Just like those of us in healthcare and other essential workers, they are putting themselves at a level of risk by returning to the classroom. And we need to do what we can to reduce that risk as much as possible. I do a fair job of calming my own anxieties through examining data, but the reality is the risk of my profession has increased over the past six months. At times, fear does creep into my mind. In those times, I try to focus on the help that I'm able to provide to children and parents. That's what gets me through. And it is an amazing thing that we have teachers that are willing to do the same thing. We, as parents, need to be prepared to be flexible in understanding. We must support our fellow community members whether we choose to have our children attend school or to choose the remote option. There are advantages and disadvantages to either choice, but the great thing is that we have the choice. Parents are all free to weigh the risks and benefits of the options before us and decide what is best for our family. For those with children in school, parents need to make household plans for potential moves to a hybrid model or remote learning if it's deemed necessary. We need to have a plan in place for when our child wakes up with a runny nose or a fever. We can't just send them into school anymore. That is not an option. We need to have a plan in place when they're asked to be out for two weeks because of a COVID contact in school. This will not be a normal school year. None of us can have that expectation. But if we stay flexible, we treat teachers like the heroes they are, and most importantly, focus what is best for our children, we will succeed as a community. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sue Linehan. I'm the nurse leader for the district and in the face of our nursing team, and I just wanted to get up and make a couple of comments to let you know that the nursing team has been working tirelessly over the summer creating, tracking documents, and changes in policies about keeping the kids safe and the staff safe once you're in school. As the doctors mentioned, it won't be a usual school year. You know, there has been in the past, you know, "Go off to school, stick it out, you can do it," and that's really not going to be what can be done this year. If a child has a single new unexplained symptom, the child does need to be home. And that's how it's going to, we really are taking the most protective stance for the kids. And if a child ends up, or a staff member, ends up not feeling well and lands in the nurse's office, a single symptom, because the symptoms of COVID unfortunately are very broad and nonspecific. And so it's going to take some time and understanding of the kids, and luckily, all of the nurses have been here for years or several years and know most of the kids. But with the lack of an underlying condition that we know is attributing to their cough, you know, a seasonal allergy that we have documented, they're going to be sent home. We're going to have a low threshold to send home. So as Matt said, that we have to make sure we have somebody there to answer those calls and to come get those kids. We have strict policies that are being set up if a kid is symptomatic at school, isolating them in areas alone until they can be picked up, and as well as calling, once we hear, and giving you recommendations about seeing the doctor and recommending testing. We have, as they said, direct lines to the Department of Public Health. We will call and get recommendations about quarantining. But as of today, the rule is 10 and 1. If you are symptomatic of something that could be COVID-related, then you're out of school or out of work for 10 days, and your symptoms have improved, and you're fever-free for 24 hours. So, lots of changes there, but I do want you to know we will have the secretaries if you're calling in your children and explaining to them, they're out because of this reason. You will, and if there's a checkoff list, they'll have a script to go through if you're calling in students. If they fall under the realm of potentially COVID, you will get a personal call from the school nurse that day telling you what you need to do and when you need to come out of class. I'm sure there'll be other questions, but I just, it was the questions about taking care of somebody if they're symptomatic at school, and as well as tracking. We're developing forms right now to track when kids became symptomatic or tested positive, when they can come back to school, as well as a kind of re-entry into school screening for those kids for a couple of days. They'll see the nurse before, at the beginning of the day and at the end of the day for temperature checks to make sure that something hasn't cropped back up. So just please know that we are, you know, working to keep everybody as safe as possible at school. Thank you.
Derek, at this time, we were going to continue with the panel and thematically go about what Dr. Heiduk and Dr. Peterson and Sue Linehan did. I would suggest, if possible, we open the floor and phone lines for the next 10 minutes for questions pertaining to health, because I know that Dr. Peterson and Dr. Heiduk have to leave, and I would not want the opportunity to pass us by for those questions to be taken. Is that possible? And then we go back and begin, and do a restart with Dr. Thibodeau? Would that be possible?
I think that sounds like a good plan. Just to, I've been to one of our school district meetings before. Each speaker has up to three minutes to speak on their topic or ask questions. We know there's a good amount of people here, and we're going to try to attempt, with some of the technical difficulties tonight, to receive some phone calls as well from those folks at home. Josh Borden here will be helping us with the lights, so obviously, green is good, yellow, you're getting close to your time, and red, you know, please try to wrap up as quickly as possible. The idea is we'd like to be able to have as many people as possible ask questions, so if you can limit the same types of questions, either think of something different or whatever, just so we can get as many questions as possible from that. So with that, if we want to go ahead and people can go to your, the nearest microphone. Where are the mics? Like, it's running in the center here. Yeah, and the health questions first, please. And I would request, I know the teachers are also here tonight, they do have an agenda item. They also have a meeting later this week, a webinar with Human Resources, so I think ideally, we'd like to see the students and parents asking the health questions first, and just making sure they can get all their questions asked first, so we'd appreciate that. And Mr. Moderator, it's all to you. Oh, just to, I'm sorry, just the process for the phone, what we'll do is, if people want to call in, every so often, I'll alert. We have a phone in the other room, Kathleen Holtzman is manning that. I'll let her know to send through a call, and then I'll just repeat the question into the microphone here, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Quick question. Will you be requiring constituents to state their name when they come to the mic?
Yes, please. For the record, if they would state their name and address before speaking. Thank you.
All right. If anybody would like to come up and speak on health-related questions, now would be the time. You have three minutes. You'll notice the green light goes on. When 30 seconds are remaining, I will switch the yellow light on, and then I would ask you to, you know, wrap it up and end when the red light is on. Come on down, sir. Just a reminder, please state your name when you begin.
Hi, my name is Manuel Rodriguez. I live in Brook Street, Derry, New Hampshire. Well, I had a concern, you know, I think it's very nice what you guys are doing and how much money you guys are spending, especially to try to keep the kids safe. But I believe that everything that you guys are doing is on a theory. We run on the CDC, the WHO, but they have been changing their data constantly all year long. So my biggest concern is, okay, what's going to happen now when the winter comes and all the kids start getting sick? Now, they're going to stop missing days, and they're going to constantly be out, so that's not going to be fair for the parents. They want their kids, because kids got to socialize, and it's very important for them to be together with each other. And we're running on statistics that, you know, haven't been proven yet and constantly change. So how fair is it going to be for the parents? They have to constantly be missing work, knowing that it could affect their work, they could end up losing their jobs. And on top of that, how much money does it cost to really risk our children instead of bringing a remote learning at least for another half a year, knowing that all the numbers of COVID has been going up all over the country? You know what I'm saying? What guarantees that the numbers are going to stay low? And how many of us are willing to risk our children from contracting COVID just because the death rate has been little? I wouldn't want my son to be in that 1% rate of the death rate, and I don't think it would be fair for the rest of the parents here. That was my comment. Thank you.
I mean, part of what you're saying, I think, is, you know, remote learning gives us the most social distancing. And right now, we are enjoying very low numbers. But if that changes, that's when we pivot. Because there are also, as Matt outlined, there are also risks to social, to remote learning. Risks on children's social emotional learning, social emotional stability. So absolutely, we're all on the same page. We don't want to see that .1% for anybody in Derry or any other child. But like Matt illustrated with his numbers, and I tried to show with my numbers, if we're going to do this right here in New Hampshire, when our numbers are low, this is the time for us to try. And I think we have a very robust plan based on data in order to mitigate the risks for our students. You're right, when we come to winter, we're going to be testing, we, Matt and I, the medical community, are going to be testing a lot of kids for COVID. It's a little bit different, right? Because in the past, you'd bring your child into me, and I'd say, "He's got a virus. Go home." Essentially, that message is the same, it's just a different virus. And we have different rules in order to try to keep that virus from spreading, trying to keep a surge from happening. So what it comes down to is we all just need to be very conscious of what's changing, and we have to be flexible within our families and within our school district to meet the changes and the challenges of our community. I still firmly believe that sending our kids back to school is the right choice. I think the data supports that. I think we have a district that's committed to making a very safe environment, and a district frankly, that's willing to say, "All right, the state's saying, our regional folks are saying, we need to change our plan." And we will. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Darlene Morrison, 55, Brady Ave. I appreciate all the information you are giving us. One thing that I heard over and over again is how important face coverings are going to be, but I'm just wondering why in the classroom, when they're going to be even closer together, because it's not six feet that I'm hearing in the classroom, why is it that that's the place you're not place you're not going to require masks? I kind of think of that as when we're in a restaurant back in the day and you're all under one roof and you say, "Do you want smoking or non-smoking? You're in the same room." So that is a big concern to me. And I know, I don't know who else in here has that concern, but I would like for you to address that, because that's a big part of Plan A that I do not agree with. I'm all willing for being safe going back. That, to me, does not make sense, that plan, that part of the plan. So thank you.
It certainly is confusing when you have different agencies saying what the distance should be. And, and I think Ben Kahn said it very nicely. Six is better than three and nine is better than six and 15 and so on. But as you get further and further, you get closer and closer to remote learning. The World Health Organization, which has an abundant amount of data from a number of nations, has come up with one meter, which, in my American way, is still three feet, four inches. The district is committed to more than four feet distance, four and a half feet. And I know that's a big sticking point, reading the signs coming in. Six feet is what the CDC has been saying. But we have three other agencies that are saying, "Three feet is okay" and we're not going to that limit. We're at four. The Academy of Pediatrics has come out and said it, the World Health Organization has said it, and the state guidelines have said it. And if anybody knows Ben Kahn, he's one of the smartest people I've ever met. He's got kids going to school too. And his kids are going to be three to six feet apart. The point of taking off masks is mask breaks. I don't know that they're mandatory. That's not the policy. I don't write the policy and I'm not trying to kick this over, but I can tell you that the data are, that this germ is droplet. It's close. There is some data maybe to say that it becomes aerosolized, but there is no data to say that the aerosolized particles are infective. There is very limited data to suggest that even surfaces are going to be infective. This is mostly respiratory. Matt and I, when we were, before we got here, we, we said, "If there are people sitting here in these front rows, we're not going to wear our masks." Because that's the issue. It's not the fact that it's coming down onto this desk and somebody's going to touch it. So I think those mask breaks are to give some break. If you don't want your, your student to have a mask break, I think that's a legitimate thing that you tell your student. When they say, "Take off your mask," leave yours on. It's okay. I think that's an option that you have as a parent to instruct. Is that fair? You had more?
Darlene Morrison, 55 Brady Ave. That is fair to say. And I, I, and I have read a lot, I actually printed them all out and have been reading them. A lot of the data that you're referencing, but a lot of it, when it's less than six feet, it always is referencing with masks, with face coverings. And I completely agree with giving mask breaks. My daughter hates wearing a mask. However, what I can say is just like teaching somebody how to use scissors for the first time, teaching someone how to brush their teeth, how to sharpen a pencil. I'm an educator myself. It takes, it takes practice. So we can't say they can't do it, wear masks. It takes practice. It takes modeling. It takes being compassionate and empathetic about it. But my problem with the Plan A, and I'm not going to say it directly to you, because you're just giving information, the medical information, but my problem with Plan A is how it is stated that when a child is sitting at their desk, they have the option to take a mask off. How much block of time is that, that they don't have a mask on? It doesn't make sense to me. It's, it does not, that part does not make sense to me. The way it is worded, I get mask breaks. I absolutely agree with you. But there's other ways to tell kids to take breaks, not, "You can take your mask off for 90 minutes." That's just my opinion.
I 100% agree with you that it takes modeling and, and we all need to be doing this. And I think, again, that's what the Northeast, we have data on this, the Northeast is, we're doing fantastic job of wearing masks. I joked about this and I, I told Matt that I was going to put my filter in place, but somebody was the first person to wear pants too, right? And so now we all do. And I think it's that kind of modeling that if we're all wearing masks, those two-year-olds that I see in the office, they just come in with their masks on, because that's what everybody else is doing. And for three months, we've been doing it, and let's face it, that's an eighth of a two-year-old's life. And so I, I think you're right. I think we can continue to work on that policy and I think it's, it's good feedback. Thank you. You want some?
So I was involved in a lot of those conversations and believe me, eight weeks ago or 10 weeks ago, I can remember saying, "There's no way, if masks are mandated, that kids are going to be able to tolerate it." And we've all switched and we've all moved and now we know the, the, very much the importance of masks. The reason that it came up as mask breaks when they're sitting at their home base is because they're in a cohort, they're in, especially in elementary school where they're co-horted with the 18 other kids and their seats are, you know, in theory, they're facing somebody else's, the back of somebody else's head. I'm just explaining to you where it came from. And kids need to eat, they need to drink their water, they're having snack developmentally for six and a half, seven hours a day. It's very difficult, so, for kids. And so the thought behind it and with the evidence that we've had from, you know, the doctors, that if they were seated at their desk during quietly learning, presumably asymptomatic, and you can go with the caveat that, you know, a third of the population are, could be asymptomatic, that they're sitting there, they're not heavy breathing, they're not doing movement time, whatever, that that would be a time that they, the teacher could option for them to pull down, that you, if you need a break for your mask, get a drink of water, we're going to do this math exam if you want to do that. That's, that's where the thinking came from that. And just trying to think of any time during the day where they could have a break was when they were at their home base. So I understand your concerns and maybe it will be only when they're eating or drinking. You know, we've talked about a lot of strategies to keep the masks near the kids and developmentally, it's so hard at different ages, but, you know, if they're going to take it off for snack, a hook on everybody's desk, a lanyard, a rip-away lanyard, so if they get up to move, Billy, you, you know, mask up. So I, I guess we will, you know, we'll relook at it, for sure. And again, like Chris said, if, if your student, if you want to instruct your students, you need to keep that mask on all the time. But as educators, we know there's a, a wide range of, of students and tolerance to things. And so we were hoping to give them one little base when they were in their little kind of bubble, that they could take it off. So, thank you.
Real quick, a ground rule that I forgot to mention is that each resident's allowed, I would ask them to speak once, so everyone can be heard. The last resident did not go over three minutes, so it worked out perfectly. But go ahead.
Hi, Lindsay Club, 3 Barkland Drive. I just want to, first of all, point out that you guys are giving us choices and that's the best thing that you can do. That was my biggest concern as a parent, is that we have our own choice to make. So thank you for that. I do have a question, two questions actually, one for Sue. I have a daughter who's a type 1 diabetic. I put that out there proudly. We need the nursing support every day for my daughter. She's not old enough to read and write and do her own stuff. And we've had an amazing support network at Derry Schools. My only question is whether or not you feel your nursing staff is going to be adequate enough to continue the demands that my daughter needs just daily anyway, and still keep up with all this stuff with COVID and testing and, you know, I'll have my own plans as it relates to her, but that's more of like a staffing thing. I, I could see that they were going to do a substitute staffer, but I know how much time and energy my, you know, child takes and I'm worried about that. And then just a second question, if somebody could answer it, the Corona, the testing for it, is there anything to say that the 10 to 1, like if they, if somebody got a test that's negative and they just had a cough and we don't know really what it was or, you know, sore throat and they got tested and it was confirmed strep or it was confirmed something else, can they then, when that is done, return to school or do they have to be out for the whole 10 days? Can they get a test, a negative test? Thank you.
Thank you for those questions and for recognizing that there is a tremendous amount of work for one nurse in each school. So thank you. We are definitely have a plan for higher-risk students, like somebody with type 1 diabetes. And your nurse will be contacting you for that, but they'll definitely, we don't want healthy children in the nurse's office. So we, the district has ordered mobile carts, so if kids need testing or med delivery or things like that, that we can do that. Clearly, somebody with diabetes would need the nurse, but it, there may be times that we have to put off to administration with training if somebody needs a, just a daily medication at noon. So there are plans and the higher-risk individuals certainly will be, we would request that you get a note from the doctor if there's anything, you know, different, not only for diabetes, but, you know, there's kids that are potentially immunocompromised from transplants or whatever. So the higher-risk individuals, if the parents are sending them to school, we ask for maybe a little bit more documentation. But the plan will be before school, you will be contacted by your, by your school nurse. But just, so they're on our highest priorities, those things. As far as somebody going out, sent home for a strep throat, and I don't know if you want to do that, if they test positive for strep and they're, a, don't have a fever for 24 hours, absolutely, they can come back. Or if testing, if testing gets better and the results of COVID testing is quicker than it is right now, which hopefully the state, and I know Dr. Peterson can probably address that, and if they test negative for COVID and their symptoms are better and they're, don't have a fever, absolutely, they can come back. Do you want to add to that?
Exactly. If we can explain to something else, you're coming back.
Right.
Do you have a negative test? If your symptoms are better, you're coming back.
Okay. Could you hear him? Yes.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, we're going to take one more question on health in the building and then I'm going to see if anyone is on the phone lines. If anyone wants to call in, that number is 432-1224. So one more question in-house and then we'll move to a phone.
Good evening. Can you hear me? My name is Richard Tripp. I live at Wyndham Road. I'm not really concerned with students in the classroom. I think that's a fairly controlled environment. I would be more concerned with students changing classes, students going to the bathroom, students on buses. Is there going to be a plan where if students are not masked up in situations like that, that there'll be some repercussions? So that, because they're, I guess, pushing the limits and, and maybe possible transmitting the disease?
No, it isn't. Okay, I was going to let you take that one. It was all yours. I do not have anything written in the plan, nor do any of us, about repercussions for students not wearing masks. And I'll explain why. In the Derry Cooperative School District, we pride ourselves on relationships with students and families. And we talked a lot about this with, with everyone on our teams. So first and foremost, we would talk to students, we would converse with them at the building level, with whomever it would be, with teachers, with counselors, with administrators, and then converse with their families. And we believe in, in, really in our deepest sense of belief, that in most situations, that will solve the issue. And again, it will be a case-by-case scenario. A blanket statement about students refusing to wear masks or face coverings with, taking into consideration, our district would not be appropriate at this time for our district. We feel our educators have fantastic relationships with students and families. So that's the way we'll handle it and really we'll see how the, the success rate of that. It is our belief that we will have success with that strategy.
Okay, thank you. Kathleen, if you are hearing me in the other room, if you have a call to send through, you can go ahead and do that. In the meantime, I think we'll wrap up with the medical. We can always come back to it later if possible and move on to the next panelists. Let's see if there's any calls coming through. Okay, we'll come back to the phones again. Thank you for that.
Okay, we're ready?
Thank you very much.
One more? Sure.
Good evening and thank you for holding this in-person meeting to discuss the reopening plans. My name is Erica Layon. I live at 84 Shenator Road with my husband and three sons, including this trooper, since it's been three hours. As a longtime homeschooler, I see an opportunity for a better relationship between homeschooling, remote instruction, and in-class instruction to help our community navigate this coming school year. Because I'm a homeschooler, so I'm able to educate my children in the way that fits us best and we've missed out on a lot of opportunities this year too. So I know that it's pretty much the ultimate IEP. But what's more important right now is to talk about how we can foster a positive relationship between the school community and our neighbors who are choosing just for this year to homeschool. I know then some other neighboring towns, students have been told that if they don't come back to school, either remote or in person, they're no longer a part of the school community. They're being cut off. And I think we're better than that here in Derry. We're a cooperative school district. We saw these amazing parades we had for students, families, teachers, and staff, and that just made me jump for joy every time I saw us going around. So I'm really wondering how homeschooling families who aren't willing to take on these risks or do the more, do the remote learning that doesn't work for a lot of students, they're going to make it a lot easier for the other students to be here, have appropriate distance, and be able to have that capacity for some other people. So I'm hoping that we can look at this, make it work nicely, and really embrace those, those students, those families that aren't quite ready to come back in person, but can't wait until they finally view it as low enough for us to come back and join their friends and teachers and school. So I sincerely hope we can do that. And also, I'm an economist and an analyst, so I saw the mention of the MERV-13 filters. I hope that we're putting some reserves in because those are a lot harder on the HVAC systems. And if we're going to be running those constantly, we're probably going to have them wear out sooner. So I don't want in five or six years, if they run out early, our school district to have to bear that cost if it's a known, expected shortened lifetime on those HVACs. I don't want us dealing with not having teachers or nurses because of what could be a foreseeable budgetary problem based on just those characteristics. So I guess just in closing, I hope we can all work together, make this be a great school year. And, thank you.
Okay, folks, thank you. Mary Ann, go ahead on with the next portion.
Dr. Heiduk and Dr. Peterson, I know you have to, to leave. We thank you very much for your time and expertise. Are you going to stay around after I just said that? Okay. Well, you are welcome to stay around too. So you're welcome to stay around too. I thought you had to leave. So if you have to leave in between the presentations on behalf of our entire school district and our entire Derry community, thank you very much. We appreciate your expertise, your guidance, your recommendations, and your transparency. And we know that you will continue to work with us on behalf of students, our staff, and our families of Derry. So thank you. (applause) And for Sue Linehan, I don't think you'll leave, but if you do, if you have to, you are amazing in every way, and your time this summer, we can never repay you for all of your time and your expertise, as well as your heart. So, thank you. All right. Dr. Thibodeau, can you live up to all that? I know you can. All right. Dr. Kristin Thibodeau, our chief school psychologist.
Good evening to all of you. Is it working? Not close enough? Oh, there we go. Thank you. Thanks. So, I'm Dr. Kristin Thibodeau. I'm the chief psychologist of the Derry School District, and I've been here for 22 years, I think, or something like that. And I know that the social-emotional plan was gone over in great detail by Mr. Garofalo, and I was a very key part of that plan and very happy with all the collaborating I've done with various staff and administration to have that come up. But I, one of the questions I wanted to look at or talk to you about that I saw in the parent questions was just concern about how the social-emotional, mental health issues will be addressed in whatever the plan is that's selected. That is totally understandable, that you have these concerns. And I think COVID is new to all of us, as we know, but I really have confidence in our staff. We have an amazing professional staff of school counselors, school psychologists, home-to-school coordinators, mental health counselors, licensed psychologists, and school counselors, I don't know if I mentioned that already, I thought I did, that are well-trained and experienced in dealing with all sorts of crises that could come up. Though COVID is different, in many ways, the same, it has the same things that counselors need to look at and think of in a crisis from a, from a social-emotional perspective. We continue to be open to parents' concerns, and we are skilled at touching base with students and meeting them where they are at. I think Mr. Garofalo talked about the staff training that will take place to look at anxiety and depression, red flags for teachers, also resilience and coping. That will, every teacher will go through that prior to school starting, and that will be done by myself. Some of my colleagues will do some of the other things with regard to offering an optional self-care three-hour training to staff, either in person or remote. My training will be in remote or in person. And then there will be some parent training that will be done to help parents prepare for the return to school that will be done jointly between me and the Center for Life Management. In addition to trying to provide sheets, work, resource sheets and things like that will be helpful for staff and parents. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thibodeau. Appreciate that. You're doing an amazing job, and you've been working extra hard this summer and on-call all the time, so thank you. Next, we have our super principals representing our amazing administrative team over there. Thank you for being so patient this evening. We have Mary Hill, principal of Grinnell Elementary School, Dan LaFleur, principal of Barka Elementary School, Bill Fox, principal of East Derry Memorial Elementary School, and Kim Carpentino, principal of Gilbert H. Hood Elementary School. So, welcome back, and thank you for being here this evening.
So, we have the category of other, and there were a lot of questions that ran across each other, and one of the themes was recess, movement breaks, and what parents referred to as non-academic times. Would that still happen for my child? And the answer is absolutely. With or without masks, there would still be movement breaks, depending upon how far we can distance the kids. We will have recess at the elementary level where they'll be with their cohort, and we'll rotate locations outside so that they each have an opportunity to be on the playground, not at the same time, but maybe my day's Monday and I get to go back there on Thursday so that we can keep those cohorts together. Our goal is to, our life will not be normal, but there are still things that our kids will still get to do, just with extra precautions. The big things are going to be the social distancing, the face mask, the hand washing, and working together with the staff and the families. Healthy kids at school, kids that have no symptoms, and we'll make it work for everybody.
Hi, everybody. So, we've also been getting a lot of questions about arrival and dismissal, and certainly that's going to look a little bit different. We're going to be maintaining social distancing during those times, and those plans are very school-specific. But you should be looking for communication soon from your schools about what it's going to look like as far as traffic patterns go, potential for different signage or different timing of things. We do anticipate a lot more parents driving their children to school, and therefore, we do appreciate your patience in those first few days, although we do believe that the phasing in of students will help us to kind of get everyone accustomed to what those new procedures are going to look like as far as drop-off with buses and staggering that drop-off, staggering the drop-off of students from cars, and having different entrances and exits to the building. Students will not be congregating in the morning or the afternoon like they've done in the past, but we'll do what we can to maintain those cohorts. We will maintain those cohorts and practice social distancing upon the entrance and exit. But again, if you have any questions about what that's going to look like, please reach out to us or your child's principal or administration to find out and look for a communication that should be coming out very soon to you.
Hello. Also, supplies. We've had a lot of questions about supplies, so you heard earlier that we are going to ask and encourage kids not to share supplies. All of the schools and teachers have put out supply lists. If you don't have a supply list, just contact the school's principal. They should be on websites, but if you can't find it, just make sure you call us so that we can get you a supply list for kids. In the middle school, we're not going to be using lockers to start off the year. The kids will just have their supplies in their backpack as they move around. We don't want them congregating at lockers. For elementary supplies, they, they'll have their little desk area that they can keep their supplies in, but we are encouraging that they're not going to be sharing supplies. So, the other thing that we've had questions about is extracurricular activities. So, at this point, we just feel like it's prudent for us to start off the year not with extracurricular activities and build those in as we move forward, but for the start of the school year, we need to focus on what we're doing in the school day and look at that as the fall goes into the fall, and we can look at clubs and extracurricular activities and how we can do some interscholastic sports-type stuffs. But for the start of the fall, we're not going to be looking at that.
We received a lot of questions, and I don't want to be too redundant, but I just want to cover a couple of things here regarding face coverings and masks. Staff, once again, to reiterate, will be required to wear face coverings while at school. Students will be required to wear face coverings and masks unless accommodations are necessary. Certain situations, unable to appropriately social distance, moving outside of a classroom like at recess, moving around the classroom, and required by activity in which they participate. Obviously, entering and exiting school on a daily basis, boarding, riding, and exiting the bus. So, hopefully, those, those questions were answered. I, like I said, I don't want to repeat, I probably did, what some of Dr. Peterson's comments were, but certainly felt that it was worth repeating, so thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you to all of our administrators who are here this evening, working behind the scenes as well. Truly appreciate all of your efforts. Next up, Jane Boyle, Director of Student Services.
Hi, everyone. Very nice to be here and see all of you tonight. There were some questions around individual education plans, so I just, I know it was said in the presentation, but I just want you all to understand that if a student has an IEP, the services in the IEP will be delivered to them. Students that need to go out for their pull-out services and go to a resource room or get small group instruction, they will leave their classroom, they will have masks on when they leave their classroom, they will have masks on or be behind those plexiglass dividers around a small group instruction with their special ed teacher. The special ed teacher or the related service provider, your speech and language pathologist or your occupational therapist or your physical therapist, they will all have face coverings on also. The same goes for, we did get some questions about 504 and accommodations. Certainly, with their buildings, we will look at that, so just make sure that you contact your school building administrator or just call the SAU office, the Student Service Department, and we'll help you. And I will encourage you all and anyone that's listening on TV, if you do have any questions in regard to IEPs or anything to do with your student and their support services, please contact the student support, our number over at the SAU office. I am more than happy to help you, direct you in the right way, and talk to you about any concerns that you might have. So, I just want to make sure you know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Okay, Dr. Cliff Dancy, Director of Informational Technology.
Most of the questions that were asked in the form were answered in the plan that I have concerning the one-to-one and the bandwidth, but there were a couple of questions that were not addressed in the, in the plan, and that, one of those was what resources will be available for family and students to learn the technology systems used in remote learning? And we're going to step up our parent PD library, our video library of teaching people how to use Google Classroom and EdMentum and the other tools that, that we have available. We have purchased a district-wide Zoom license, so we can accommodate a lot more people on a Zoom call, and we can do some live presentations for parents as we go along. So, we have not forgotten about the struggles that you faced during the spring, and we're going to increase our efforts to make sure that, that you're up to speed with those things. Another question was, should parents buy earbuds or headphones for their children? We are encouraging you to do that as a school supply. As you can see, we have spent a considerable amount of money this year with the, with the devices and, and the software and other things. That would be one more expense added on to the district's budget, but if you could supply that, usually, you can get a cheap set of earbuds at Dollar Tree for about a buck. So, they may not have the microphone in them, but the, the Chromebook does have a microphone in it. So, that was one. One other thing that Ms. Amard alluded to in the budget considerations, which was another question, was the purchase of hotspots for, for families who do not have internet service, and we are looking into that, looking into, being able to provide for those people who just can't find any internet service, the ability to put a hotspot in their home. And that was, that was the extent of my questions.
And to address any final instructional questions, we have Lisa Long, Director of Mathematics, and Sarah Taylor, Director of English Lingua Arts.
Most of the instruction questions that came through, we do believe we answered in either the plan or the presentation today, but there were a couple other outlying ones that we want to mention. There were a couple of questions about grading, and I just want to say, that is a topic that we continue to work on as we head to the fall. Ultimately, our goal is to provide authentic, clear feedback on student progress in regards to their academic achievement, on specific learning targets, but also on the school district identified student dispositions such as perseverance, problem-solving, self-motivation. So, you will hear more information about that as we continue to work on that.
All right. And a couple of other questions that came up were about working in small groups in classrooms or pair groups, and students will be required to wear masks when they move around the classroom and might come within three feet of one another, and those small group activities are going to be limited and for small increments of time throughout the school day and within their cohort groups in the classroom.
Okay, thank you. Want to open up for questions now?
All right. I'm going to go back to Kathleen just to see if she has anyone on the phone. Just a reminder, if you do want to call in, the number is 432-1224. Is there like an emergency hit zero or something? Do we know on that line? Okay. While we're checking on that, we'll go ahead and continue with in-house questions and turn it back over to Mr. Borden, our moderator.
In-house, in-house questions are welcome. Just a reminder, please state your name.
I've had this mask on since 7 o'clock this morning, so I just needed a break for a second.
And if you could, if you could please adjust the mic as the speaker comes up so we could hear you, that'd be great.
Can you hear me now?
Better.
Okay. First of which, I want to thank everyone and fellow citizens. Some observations, if I may. The data that you are referring to is, as you stated, is somewhat outdated, and you're asking us to, not only us, but the committee, to vote on something where we don't, we don't have enough information, and the information is changing so much, and that this virus is so predictable that we'll find out in two weeks what the results are going to be. So, but what I wanted to ask was, that was just an observation, and I, you reinforced that, that the data is outdated. So, I just have a, just a couple of questions. So, of the five elementary schools and the two middle schools, and with the Plan A option, I'm sorry, did I mention my name? I apologize. I'm sorry. My name is Dwayne Miller, 20 Old Auburn Road, Debbie, New Hampshire. So, as I mentioned, of the five elementary schools and the two middle schools, in that this plan is going to a three-foot separation as a threshold, an objective of six feet. Is there any metric, is there any data where assessments were done of the schools, of the elementary and middle schools, to indicate where the optimum could be met and the threshold could be met? And that, is it possible that, thinking outside the box, and if I recall, Doctor, I had sent you an email relevant to using local facilities that are sitting stagnant, as in the Derry Theater, that we could expand our facilities to meet the objective of all in school, but to also be safe to our students, to our teachers, and to our family members? And that, this is kind of an in-between option, but I'm just very curious if there's a metric relevant to that data that the principals have relevant to their facilities? And that, the board members are here to vote on something that we don't have all the data, and that we're going to find out really soon, and that we should be going into a crawl, walk, run phase. Statistically, no, let me rephrase that. There's 120 people in here. Within the next, within the next six months, 10 of those people will have the virus, and one of those people have the potential of becoming deceased. Of the people here, you're asking us to decide on approximately 3,000 students of just our middle school and elementary school, not to mention all of our family members?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
It's evolving, but I would suggest that data from January to May of this year is not out But I would suggest that data from January to May of this year is not outdated. I think that, again, the World Health Organization, the Academy of Pediatrics, and the state guidelines suggest that three to six feet is sufficient. It's not logistically practical for us, or cost-effective for us, to distance children six feet or to expand or to double up on classes, you know, splitting classes so that, that maybe, you know, part of the school is here for part of the day and part of the school is, is not here. I would leave the rest to Mary Ann, but I, I would disagree that, I would disagree on the, the data being outdated for sure. But I would 100% agree with you that it continues to evolve, and that's our job to continue to monitor that.
Amy Reaume, 604 Colette's Grove Road. I thought I'd speak slowly so she could actually get it. R-H-E-A-U-M-E. You remembered me? Oh, boy. I'm only shaking a little bit. Each time I speak, it gets a little bit better. First of all, I just want to thank, am I doing that, the feedback? The school board and all the administrators, the task force. Should I do something different? I'm fine? Okay, all right. For everybody who's here, and I'm sure this summer, you probably wanted to do something else. So thank you for all your dedication, meeting bi-weekly, all that. When Jane and Mary and Dr. Pecorian say, "Call me," they mean it. Dr. Pecorian called me at seven o'clock last night. She doesn't even let 24 hours pass without calling me back. So when these folks say, "Call me," they mean it. So one thing that I wanted to talk about health-wise, oh, I forgot I'm on a timer, oof, is that my son is on the autism spectrum, and he is attending Barca for a couple hours, a couple days a week right now. And he is wearing a mask. And every time he sticks his hands under that mask, they say, "Go wash your hands, Kevin." And it's decreasing now, but he is wearing a mask. So if a child with autism, ADHD, and sensory processing disorder can do it, I'm really hoping that, you know, the children out there can get trained. I really, my point today is I want to reach out, I'm assuming we're voting tonight, is that correct? To the school board members who are not sure about Plan A. As you know, actually, there's some new members here. My son is part of the New England Center for Children Partner Program. I think it is necessary, it is required for my son to get back in school full-time, as well as the other children in NECC Partner Program Act. I know IELTS is difficult because that's a medically compromised situation. Any kind of children with IEPs and 504s, in general, they have not been able to access free and appropriate public education for the last five months, in general. And I say that because I, and I say that mostly for the families that I know of, that are especially on the autism spectrum. I know that there's been a decline in their access to academics and an increase in self-injurious behavior, aggression, and other things like that. So I'm running out of time. So let me just say, I would appreciate it if, like the pre-K to two kids, if specifically for the NECC Partner Program and children who need routine and full-time care, that they're able to access their education services full-time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if anybody needed to respond to that before we go on. Okay. I have the unique experience of actually working in a classroom right now. I am an early childhood educator. And I will tell you that our protocol is not as stringent as what you are putting forth, and we are doing just fine. Our children are thriving. My child at home, I also, goodness. I also have the unique experience of, my child just transferred to Derry. This year was his first full year. He came here from a private school with self-injuring behavior, rage. Very scary times. I'm trying not to get emotional. South Range School completely changed my son's life. I can't say thank you to them enough. And I am so frightened of what will happen if he does not have access to the structure, the routine, and the love and caring atmosphere that he has had at that school. Because we went from our son talking at such a young age about not wanting to be here anymore, to can't wait to go back to school this year and keeps asking me if they've made a decision yet. And like I said, I work in childcare. These children are one to five, they do not wear masks. We're all so scared about masks, about these breaks from masks, about kids. My kids don't wear them, and they don't distance either. They're five and si, they're five years old. Most of them are five, I have three and four-year-olds as well. But we go all the way down to six weeks old. The adults wear the masks. We wear them outside in 95-degree weather, 100% humidity. We are dying all day long, but we do it for the love of the children because we know that it's what's best for them. There is no communication boundary happening with these masks on. My children are well aware when I'm being sarcastic, when we're having a fun time, when I'm being serious with them. And they are toddlers and preschoolers, and they are getting this. They are thriving. These are children who experienced drug abuse, homelessness. I, I do work in an at-risk community. So the fact that these children are experiencing these things was even more of a reason that I needed to step up and go back, no matter how scared I was. And it was all in my head. I was extremely frightened when I got that call from my boss saying, "We're opening back up, you have to go. If you don't, you have to go for unemployment." And I decided to go back, and I'm glad I did because there's nothing to be scared of. I wear my mask, I wash my hands, we wear gloves as needed. Like I said, the children don't wear masks and they don't distance. Nobody's getting sick. I have a cousin who owns a childcare center in another area in New Hampshire. She was closed for two weeks, opened right back up after just two weeks. She's been open since April, no issues whatsoever. And yes, the classes are smaller, but my son, before this, his class was 17 children. Early childhood classes right now are anywhere from 12 to 14, so you're talking a difference of about five to seven children. It's really not that big of a difference. These kids are wearing masks. There's other things in place that make that group size difference. I would say able to, able to be done.
Thank you. If you could just state your name again for the record.
I'm sorry, I don't think I did that at all. Jamie Bagnell, and I live at 13R Philip Road.
We figured out the phone issues. We have three lines coming in, and they were all busy. So the fourth line got kicked out. So the technology had a little glitch this, a little earlier this evening. But now through the magic of Google Docs, Kathleen is typing in the questions to me, so I can just read those and she can get more callers through. So I'm going to read the first question that comes through here, and then we'll head back to yourself. This question comes from Ashley Depuy. If Plan A is not approved, what do they plan on for accommodations for children with a disability if they go to remote learning? So that's if Plan A is not approved, or I guess if we have to pivot at some other point, what do they plan on for accommodations for children with a disability if they go to remote learning?
Well, with that question, I think it depends on the IEP. And I think we would have a meeting with the team and figure out what kind of accommodations or what kind of a plan we could put together. That might be a combination. We've always had with the, when we closed down in March, there still was opportunities that students from the commissioner could come into school. So I think we would look at that and figure out what's the best option for the child. The child could maybe do part of their program remote, could be, do part of their program in school. So I think that would be a discussion with the IEP team.
So I have a question, I think, about the school buses. I'm a little confused. I just, I was wondering, who knows the, the dimensions of the seats? And so if there's two people sitting together, is that effective social distancing? Because if everything else is going well at school, that one place could be, you know, the place that you, I guess, transmit the virus, right? So that's my first question. I guess along with the buses, would you be considering an opt-in or opt-out option for people? So that if people did opt out for a certain period of time, the ones that needed to take the bus could be better social-distanced? And then my other, I guess, more of a statement or question is that, you know, a lot of businesses and, you know, in all these states, we're going back in phases. So I think my, my big question is, why wouldn't we be considering going back to school in phases a little bit more than what you proposed? Because I think what you guys have said so far is just a few days or a week in a phase, rather than, you know, maybe hybrid for a month or two, see how it goes, and then slowly come back in?
If you could just repeat your name. Leah, if you could repeat your name.
I thought, sorry. Leah Borden. B-O-U-R-D-O-N.
Leah, I'm sorry. But anyways, yeah, I know it, right? So the school buses definitely are our toughest thing to get around. So I, I think that what we would be thinking about is trying to limit the number of kids that are on school buses, not having the traditional fifth graders in the back and first graders in the front, but rather having families sit together, trying to space those kids the furthest out. And I think there was a plea of, hey, can we get you to drive them in? Because I think that's the safest option, or carpooling with your neighbors, because that's going to be a safer option. Fair? Yes, and that, the, that's a state recommendation of having parents drive their kids into school.
Hello? Nope, there I am. So I, I'm sorry, I don't have the specific dimensions of the seat for you, but I can gather that information and we can make that available. The maximum of two per seat, that's essentially what most communities are doing. Because one of the pieces of the DOE recommendations, they took into consideration the fact that there had, there has been a shortage of drivers for, I would say, approximately a decade at this point. So that's one of the real challenges. And in the DOE recommendations, what they spoke to was, or speak to, is that it needs to be practical or practicable to be able to provide transportation for all of those kids that need it. So the recommendation about maximizing the distance between students, we're taking that very seriously, working with first student. We have some ridership assessments that we've done over the years. And what our data shows is, most of our school buses average 25 to 30 students. And it varies greatly. You know, you have some routes that only have 14 or 15 students. We have some short routes for high school, things like that. However, we do have some routes that are as many as 40, 44 students or so on any given day. So one of the things that we would be considering in putting out that, those, that form, where one of the questions is, asking parents what their intentions are regarding, regarding transportation. Take that information along with a great deal of other information that we've already provided to first student. We have Davis demographic information that has every student geocoded, so we know where every student lives, what grade they are in, whether or not they have siblings in that household. We have all of the information from Power School, working with Pinkerton. We have all of their information regarding student demographic information as well. We're using all of that information with first student to readjust our routes, if possible. So where we know that there might be in excess of that 25 or 30 students, we're trying to make adjustments to, if possible, have routes that only have students in one seat. Or one student per seat, rather, I'm sorry. So that's the goal. However, we know it might not be practicable or practical, and we may not be able to do that. So we're doing the best we can to maximize that distance between students with all of the information that we have. Thank you. Did I get both your, was there another question regarding transportation? Okay, thank you.
And you referred to one at a phased-in opening. We just discussed that at length in our task force, in our comprehensive task force. We brought up a number of scenarios. There were some questions about, you know, how did phased-in opening work? You know, why did stores, and particularly, say, grocery stores and gyms have a maximum capacity at first? And those maximum capacities, as we discussed, and we discussed with our medical professionals too, were based on adults. So we finally took a vote of the comprehensive task force, as I referred to in my opening statement today. And it is in my executive summary too, that I put in the original report. And the vote, although not unanimous, was definitely for Plan A. That being said, what I did was I took part of the vote from Plan B, which would have been a hybrid model, and kind of merged the two and have a limited phased-in opening over a week, not over a set, a set course of a month. So thereby, you have a modified phased-in opening, not an elongated phased-in opening.
Hi, my name is Sean Ryan. I'm at Love and Spinnaker Drive. My question, my echo and sound a lot like the person that texted in. But my concern is with my son entering kindergarten, and he has an IEP. At a young age, going through a bunch of testing and still going through testing, trying to understand what's going on with my son. So we're choosing to do remote learning. And we want to know, starting remote learning from the beginning, how will the school accommodate the services? And from the presentation, with multi-age group and, and different teachers? We realize my son, he builds a relationship with his teacher and thrives off of that. With different teachers from different areas, that's a concern of mine as well as my wife's. So I was hoping to leave here, understanding what I'm looking at for my son in regards to the accommodations and services as we're still learning and going through the process with my son.
I hope you will get an understanding. I think what would happen is, we would look at your IEP and we would look at the services in your child's IEP. And then we would determine and sit as a team and figure out how those services were going to be done. So for example, if you wanted your son to be at home and not come into school and do it remotely, then we would look at how we would do that, who would be the provider. Make sure you understood how those services were going to be provided. If your child needed speech, for example, and he was going to get individual speech, we would be making sure you knew who that speech pathologist was, what goals they were working on with your son during that period of time. So I think it's having a conversation and looking at that IEP. That's what I'm saying. If you do have a question in regard to your child and you're determining, oh, my child is going to be at home and I'm going to do remote, then we would look at figuring out a plan with the school and work with you so you understand, understood how they were going to get those services. So I hope that kind of answers your question. But please give me a call tomorrow. but please give me a call tomorrow, and we can talk individually about your child and what school they're at, and we can have a conversation.
All right. I'm going to take a caller that I have right now, and that is Katie Gifford. This is regarding PACE. She has two children, K through eight, on the PACE track, and she would like to know if they are on a remote plan, can the district still accommodate the PACE programming?
The simplest answer is yes. The how, we're still figuring out. Does that make sense? But yes, we do want to still provide what they need, just like we were talking about other students and having needs if they are remote. And we will meet those needs, we're just not exactly sure how. But the answer, the simple answer is yes.
Hi, Jenna Paradise, Hubbard Hill Road. I don't have a question, I just have a rambling statement, so I apologize. I want to start by saying thank you to the school board, Task Force, Dairy School District, everyone else who put in countless hours with our kids trying to craft a back-to-school plan with one-size-fits-all. However, I don't think this is it yet. The survey you put out a while ago asked if we wanted the kids in school, but didn't have the option of yes, but. And I think you missed the mark there. It is a concern of COVID itself. Our numbers are low, which is great, but the virus is not gone. People are starting to travel again, and we're heading into cold and flu season, and to the largest germ lab schools. I've had the privilege of being a substitute in this school system for four years now, and I've hopped through most of the elementary schools, middle schoolers scare me. So I've been able to see how school typically runs from the vantage point most parents don't see. I see the cool school, the kids get sent to school sick, sent and dosed on Tylenol to mask fevers, and sent in after had just thrown up in the morning. It doesn't take long before you see an illness whip its way through the entire class, and often a grade. Teachers aren't immune either, and we know how to sing, hey, yeah, happy birthday when we wash our hands. Now imagine an enemy we can't see if the children are carrying asymptomatic. I've read the guidelines opposed to sanitation, but children are gross creatures who sneeze and cough and don't cover their mouths. Masks will not be mandatory in the classroom, and kid spittle has wings. If masks are mandatory, well, good luck enforcing that. But the burn of this is going to be placed on our teachers, who are now going to have to be cleanup crew, social distance warriors while trying to teach. They're required PPE though, masks, and maybe face shields if they opt for that. My earliest concern for them is the first six to eight weeks of school when the classrooms are well into the 80s, stifling hot, and the only relief is a fan that they brought from home, which now isn't allowed. I'm certain I cannot tell you any more than a teacher could. If you want to ask them personally, I'm sure, and I think the union is here. In regards to the classroom, I realize you're adhering to the recommendations in regards to make room for spacing, but the way I've seen it laid out, it's not the school that these kids have known. This is rigid. One desk, one room, all day. No toys, no flex seating, no circle time on the rug, I'm guessing no rug. No sharing, no hugs, no lunch table with friends, no, no, no. If one of the biggest reasons for sending kids back is socialization, this isn't what they bargained for. Again, I realize your hands are tied in some respects, but this version of school is a shell of what it was. Now, I do want to say that I have full faith in the teachers, that they will work their magic, and figure out how to get the class in some air high fives, and at their desk for little movement breaks, but my heart breaks a little at what they're going to be missing. That being said, I realize the need for building school for many, be, sorry, for in school, in buildings, for many reasons. And once I thought about it, full day seemed a better option to me than hybrid and remote. Remote engaged so little and doesn't provide working parents the ability to send their kids somewhere safe to learn, and with the special needs kids, the services they need. Hybrid gives the illusion of safety in a way, you have three extra feet of space for a desk, but that isn't enough to help. Is the teacher going to see two separate sets of kids on different days, so still exposed to the same amount of people?
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to say one extra thing. I hope that for the remote learning, that it's going to be a little bit better than it was in the spring, and that we can accommodate somehow with Velax, and just so that these kids can learn alongside themselves.
Thank you.
Hi, Toshiball for Wildwood Drive. I just wanted to know, with the current societal tensions and overall mental health in mind, what additional precautions, if any, are being taken to ensure student and staff safety? How will safety drills take place safely? And is there a designated resource officer on site at all times in each building? Thank you.
Sorry about this. Keep it, take it off. I'll address the fire drills. I have heard back from Chief Gagnon about fire drills. Our fire drills will be much the same in that the frequency of fire drills will be much the same, however, they will not be timed. So as Chief Gagnon went to our local fire agencies, our state fire agencies, and he went all the way up to the New England Fire Agency to get that answer. So that is in regards to fire drills. So again, students will learn, it's process over time. So process will be stressed in one classroom at a time, in the hallways, so, you know, socially distanced with six feet, because that is our requirement and our, in our plan. As for our emergency drills, I have not heard back from Captain Thomas yet, and we're, we'll be still conversing with him. I think they're still trying to figure that out, to be totally honest with you. Those questions have been asked, so we will still be needing to figure that out, in terms of those emergency drills and, you know, lockdown drills in schools. But that will be some information that we will definitely get back to you, per like a video segment for parents about drills and so forth, between Jane Simard, Kim Carpentino, you know, and myself, the three of us will work together to get that information to you, as soon as we find out on the end, on that end with the police department. Did I answer all your questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you for your patience.
We're gonna take a couple more of the phone calls here. The first one is, if Plan A is approved, and students eat in the classroom, will the classroom be peanut and nut-free? This parent has nut allergies for their children.
Nope, is this on? As far as the classroom, there will be a, there will be adjustments to kids with allergies, either 504s or the individual health plans. There will be a peanut, or a nut-safe area in the classroom, similar to that what we do for snack times in kindergarten and things like that. Our schools are considered allergy-aware, allergy-safe, just like anything, we can never 100% guarantee that there is, that somebody's not going to have a nut thing, whether it be in the cafeteria, or that they're not safe table. But within the classrooms, there'll be new accommodations made to keep those kids with allergies safe, and a different area in the classroom, make sure people around them, extra hand washing before and after. So I hope that answers the question. But certainly, all of the kids with allergies and EpiPens will have individual consultations with their school nurse before school starts.
Okay, I'll take one more. This one is more of a medical nature. This parent asks, why haven't I heard that the infection can live on surfaces for up to four days?
So I think the data, there's kind of a split in that data. One is, they can live for longer, probably that 72-hour period, but the ability to be infectious decreases after about three to seven hours.
Thank you. Next person, please.
Hello, I'm Jody Nelson, mother of two Pinker, uh, seven, not middle name, sorry. I'm mother to two Pinkerton grads and have a child in elementary school here in Dairy. It's his 10th birthday today, and he's still waiting for his birthday cake to be eaten. So excuse me if I run out of here after my question is asked. I have multiple sclerosis and take medication that alters my immune system. I am high risk. I take this pandemic very seriously. With that being said, I strongly support Plan A. I have trust in our medical consultants, and I trust the data. I trust our school personnel and teachers to keep my child, and therefore myself, safe. My question was similar to one of the callers, and I just wanted to have more clarification on this, if you would. I'm very certain the COVID is not going to kill my son, but it's very likely that one mistake in a classroom where a peanut is accidentally ingested by him, or he, he rubs oil onto himself or around his mouth, will kill him. So I need to know further clarification exactly on how the room would be set up, and I actually did not hear that there would be allergen-free classroom. It's not acceptable for lunch to be eaten in the classroom with multiple children eating peanut butter or other nut butter sandwiches with my child. Also keeping in mind that he does have a 504 plan.
Excellent. Thank you for those comments. And certainly, things will need to change this year, and risk, risk tolerance. So there are certain children that have a less severe allergy than others. So there would be certainly the individual health plans and the 504. So that classroom that your child in may very well be notices going home saying, peanuts, nuts are not allowed in this classroom. So there'd be a higher level of care in those certain classrooms. And now that classroom very well may be considered, it needs to be a peanut-free thing, a peanut-free room and area. The good news, and I don't think we've officially talked about this, but I don't envision that there's going to be allowed to be any food sharing. Sadly, no parties, no things coming in that are baked from home, things like that are kind of off the table for now. And so we
Honestly, that's a big relief to me.
Yeah, so we certainly will.
That's a positive for us.
Yes, absolutely. So we will certainly have different levels of, of need for those allergens. Thank you for asking.
Laura Ferran DePani, Kristen Drive. I'm going to try to keep this as concise as I can. I want to start by saying I came here as a proponent for a hybrid model, and I sit here still advocating for that with everything that I've heard. I do firmly believe that I want my children in school to some degree. I believe that their, the social impact is, is important, and I think that they should be there. I do, however, feel as though, walking in here today, I saw some folks who might potentially be overwhelmed if all of those children are back in school, who might potentially have a risk of human error in detecting some of these things that we are relying on them to detect. I also think that as a community, which we're saying we're relying on, we have a responsibility to protect our teachers as well. Furthermore, as a community, as a country, we are completely divided on what needs to happen. So to say that we're relying on one another, and that that should somehow give us some type of hope here, it, for me, it doesn't work well. That being said, I think this is all about calculated risk, and that's what we're really here discussing. There's a level of risk in anything that we're going to do. When I hear all or nothing, which is what I'm really hearing, it doesn't sound like that's a calculated risk to me. It sounds like we're putting all of our eggs in one basket. I agree that a lot of these precautions that we're taking need to take place in a hybrid model and a full-boat model, that all certainly stands. But again, I feel as though there's a much bigger picture that we're not, we're not seeing here with respect to our educators and the environment that we're going to be putting our children in, that's going to be entirely overwhelming if we just put everybody back in one building all at the same time. I'd also like to say that I agree that the survey was taken completely out of context. I answered that survey in the hope that there would be a hybrid model. So yes, I said I was going to send my kid back, my kids back to school. I did not say I just wanted them to go hauling back in there like nothing's going on. So I would wholeheartedly think and hope that there could be some type of a happy medium here, rather than a, you either send them all in, or you keep them all home. And I would just implore you all to think about that. Thank you.
Hi, Lisa Holgren, Warner Hill Road. First, I want to say thank you to everybody for all your hard work. I appreciate the fact that you're working very hard to get our kids back to school. Our kids really want to come back to school. We all, we all want them to be safe. I think that goes without saying, so thank you for that. I also would like to recognize that there is a small window of opportunity where we are all healthy right now. So just to, not to become complacent, but to put things into perspective, over 30,000 people in Dairy, 23 positive cases. Right now, we're in a really good place. So if ever there was a time to reopen the school, we're looking at it. This is the time for our children to be assessed. This is the time for our children to meet their teachers. We've heard a lot of parents stressing how important it is, their kids did not do well remote learning, their kids need to be in front of a teacher, their kids need to have services. All of those things are important. Not every child needs that. I have five incredible kids, two have gone all the way through Pinkerton. Some are at Pinkerton, one is at West, or entering into West first time this year. And they're incredibly bright kids. Remote learning did nothing for my younger child last year, nothing. She was not challenged. She was done in an hour and a half, an hour, hour and a half. That's doing gym every day, doing music every day, and her teachers were incredible, trying to find things for her to do. My first question is, why are we only addressing the kids that need to be in school, and we're not addressing the other kids? The remote plan that's being offered is extremely lacking. If we offer a better remote plan for parents, we will open up spaces in our schools for the kids that need to be there. We're also not talking about classroom maximums. We're talking about putting 20 kids plus teachers, support staff, aides, all in one room, when 10 is a maximum for rooms. We're talking about small groups of four kids having to sit behind plexiglass and wear masks, but rooms with 20-plus kids in it are going to be able to take their masks off. I am, one thing I really don't understand, probably my first question is, this works well all over the world, and has for decades, and across our country. A lot of communities go live. Why is that not an option for our kids? If we were able to go live, it would streamlessly offer options for kids who want to be in the classroom, don't necessarily need to be in the classroom, but they can learn from their teacher. So when this craziness is all over, and the kids are allowed to go back to school, they're not meeting their new teacher for the first time in February. They're meeting their teacher on day one. They're, they're able to see their teacher, interact with their classmates, they can ask questions, they can hear other kids ask questions they may not have thought to ask, and learn from them. If the teachers are allowed to go live, this stops the need for having two separate sets of plans, like in a traditional hybrid, where the teachers have to come up with one set of, of things to do for the day for kids going remote, and another set for kids in the classroom, everybody's on the same page. They're either in front of the teacher in the class, or they're in front of their teacher on their computer. Thank you.
Thank you for that question, and I'm going to address the go-live portion of it. Currently, we do not have the infrastructure in our district for us to be able to go live seven hours a day with video instruction. We do not have the bandwidth for all of our teachers in a middle school to be able to be on seven hours a day, and kids be logging into that classroom. It's just not a possibility right now. We don't have the camera equipment. We don't, quite honestly, we had a lot of teachers who were reluctant to even be videoed last year, much less be on a video camera that's at, at home. So, but the simple answer right now is that we do not have the infrastructure to be able to facilitate that type of learning. The best we can do is a remote learning atmosphere where people do log in at certain times to meet with their teachers, and it's scheduled office hours, and then provide the video instruction for reinforcement. We are working on a, Lisa and Sarah and I have been working on an enhanced remote learning plan for this coming year that doesn't look quite like it did last spring. We have lots more activities and lots more expectations this year than we did last year. I, I hope I hope that addresses some of that, but that's the the big basic is we just don't have the infrastructure to be able to handle that type of a thing for all 3,000 of our kids.
Is this actually a wipe so I can take my mask off? Let's do it. So that's the longest I've ever worn a mask. I have a total new respect for frontline workers and people who have to wear masks all day. Jen Legu, Warner Hill Road, Derry. As a former Derry School Board member and as the current Chair of the Board of Trustees for next charter school, I believe I have a legitimate voice in the educational community of this town. I've always viewed my responsibility as a school board member as being a voice to represent the students, families, teachers, staff that I serve. My job has always been to keep, has been to help provide and ensure a safe and comfortable learning environment so that our students could thrive. In my opinion, this plan that was brought forth doesn't provide that and it's completely inadequate. I have pages of questions from parents and staff members with their concerns about the safety of our students and staff members. I'll pass these along because I'm not going to go through all of them. There's going to be a lot of disappointed people at home because they think I'm going to read them all. I'd be here till, you know, next week. Let's talk about what we know. We know how this virus is transmitted. We know there are asymptomatic carriers. We know that masks and social distancing help prevent the transmission. We know that testing and reporting of results takes time. We know these things. Here are my questions. And some of these may have been addressed, but if I don't stick to my speech, I'll go off on tangents and you don't want that. So what's the protocol when an outbreak occurs? Not going to even say if, I'm going to say when. Our numbers are very low right now. We're very, very fortunate. The majority of people are being safe. We've talked about masks. I think we're kidding ourselves to expect kids to wear masks when there are so many adults in this community that think that they're not necessary. What recording mechanisms are in place when a parent or sibling becomes COVID-positive in a different environment other than the school? We have nurses, we have doctors, we have firemen, we have personnel that are on police. We have frontline workers who are in front of infected people every day. They come home to their kids, they give their kids a hug. The kids are asymptomatic, the kids go to school next day. I don't even want to think about what happens after that. I can remember in the past, hearing about my kids' classroom, somebody having lice in the classroom. I didn't hear about this from the school. I heard about this from parents on the phone, through texting, through social media. What's the policy going to be for COVID? Masks, how do you expect, like I said, if you've got parents in this environment, in this community that think masks are unnecessary, how do you expect these kids to wear them? Buses, buses, Jenna, you nailed it. Kids on all grades riding the bus together, I get you're going to try to keep siblings together, but you got two on a seat, that right there is pretty crowded. How does social distancing possibly happen on a bus? You're putting kids in cohort classrooms together, my time's running out. But you've got this unknown happening on the bus. They go into these safe cohort classrooms, et cetera. In my opinion, heading back to school is like getting into a body of water. A person generally steps into the ankle depth to test it. As it gets comfortable, they head out to the deeper level. This plan of heading back full-time with everyone right out of the gate within a week period of time would be like jumping off a bridge into a river of rocks below. We all want the same thing. We want to re, got one paragraph. All right. We want our schools to open safely, but let's not rush it. Let's do something that's like a hybrid kind of, you know, we've got time to do this and it's okay to change our minds, but don't rush it, please.
So as we've said, the state is seeing an increased number of tests and a decreased number of positives. If there's going to be a time for us to go back, it's now.
All right, any further public input?
Darlene Morrison, 55, Brady Ave. This is not an easy task and you're darned if you do and darned if you don't. But we have one chance to get this right. Taking the most safety precautions and going back slowly, if that's what you're going to vote for, is something you have to take a look at how the plan is written. Because as it's written for Plan A, it does not do that. I am one of the parents that filled out the survey to say, yes, I want my kids to go back. But as the plan is written, I do not want them to go back without these safety measures in place. I've already mentioned the whole mask thing, so I will not go over that again. Right now, the research does show that the younger kids are less likely to transmit the virus. But as an educator, I can guarantee you if masks are not worn, teaching and learning is not the first thing that's going to be in my mind. It's going to be, is little Johnny over there sneezing coughing? Am I going to get sick? And what quality teaching is going to happen if we can't get, if we can't guarantee that faces are going to be covered to prevent the spread of it if somebody does have it? Science does continue to change as more data becomes available. And I know that percentage is very, very low, as the doctors had stated, about kids getting the virus. However, one student being a possible transmitter in a classroom where masks are not worn when a student can sit at their desk is one too many in my opinion. Right now, we need to be over cautious. We need to go back in phases. Going all in at once is not being safe. I recommend that the board consider making changes to Plan A if that's what you're going to vote on tonight. I don't think Plan A as it's written is the safe way to go. Finally, I ask you, the board and administration, to put yourselves up in the front of the room full of kids six hours a day, five days a week, with Plan A's structure in place as it is written and tell me how safe you would feel. No one asked for this, but we all need to work together to do the best we can. And just like the AT&amp;T commercial, Plan A is okay, but just okay is not okay. We need to work on this together.
Emily Pearson, 83, Lane Road, Derry. Thank you all for all of your work, task force and your school board. I am a parent. I have a daughter at West Running Brook and I am also an employee at Derry School District. So I wear both hats and I am going to fully be on board with Plan A. I encourage the parents who do not feel comfortable with that to do the first trimester at home with remote learning. That's your easing in. That's your opportunity to sit back and stay safe and see what happens if that's what you're looking for. But a lot of people aren't looking for remote learning. We want to be in school. A lot of teachers want to be in school. I'm not afraid of my students. I'm not afraid of getting sick. I want to engage them in learning. It may not be the popular position for everyone, but there are people that want to see this go through for our students this fall. So I'm going to encourage you to go with Plan A.
Lindsay Clapp, Free Bartlett, sorry, I didn't know I could come up more than once. So I just want to put out there too, I feel very comfortable. I even have a child who I think some people think are more at risk, but in fact, she's more at risk for the flu. And I've sent her to school for an entire school year as a type 1 diabetic. And if she gets sick, I have to worry no matter what. And I know we all as parents worry no matter what, right? So I appreciate all the hard work that all of you have taken your time to make. I also am an essential employee and I work with at-risk children. And I am very worried about the children that are at home and aren't being seen in school. I think that it's necessary for some children to go to school right now and that the risk level for that, everybody has a different risk calculation. Your choice, if this plan doesn't quite meet your expectations, then your choice should be to do the remote learning. And I think that the, I've also come from a different town, not in New Hampshire. And I've been thoroughly impressed with the amount of technology that you guys have put in since I've moved here, but that you had even before I moved here. Because I guarantee you, the towns in Massachusetts aren't even as equipped as what we have right now. And they did not get what we got for remote learning. So the grass isn't always greener. And I just wanted to say I appreciate all the hard work that you put in. I think it's a start of a solid plan. But this is an evolving situation. And I have faith that all of you will evolve with it as well and keep my child safe. Because I've always felt like my daughter and my son have been safe in your school system. Thank you.
Thank you, folks. We're going to wind it down here pretty soon. We'll take two more folks. It's about 10:30 now. We still have a full agenda ahead of us here. So let's see, take two more folks here and then we're going to close public comment.
78 Overledge Drive Extension. Can you hear me now? Okay, Andrea Larrera, 78, Overledge Drive Extension. Mine is just sort of a statement. I just want to point out the fact that since, well, through since the beginning of the pandemic, early pre-K education programs have been open. Daycare centers have been open. And more recently, YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, camps, dance schools, gymnastics, swim lessons, karate, among other organized sports. We haven't had a single outbreak. And all of the programs that I listed, they do not have as strict policies, procedures, mandates as Plan A is suggesting. Just want to state that. Thank you.
Jonathan Dugan, Village Brook Road, Lane. First, Derek, I'd like to address limiting the amount of people that are asking questions tonight is 100% absurd. The other agenda items that need to be covered should be waited, you should wait until you hear from everybody that has questions tonight. So if that's an amendment that you guys can make, please do. First, I'll start with, while I've been sitting here in what I guess the last three, three and a half hours, I was able to find articles that actually were on the opposing side of what the doctors presented as far as examples in Israel where the number of new cases has risen from fewer than 50 per day to two months ago, before schools reopened, to more than 1,500 per day now. Those numbers followed school outbreaks that infected at least 1,300 students and 691 staff. Also, an overnight camp for 13 to 18-year-olds in Missouri closed after 82 children and staff had become infected just three short weeks ago. There are also studies that show that children can continue the spread in Berlin, South Korea, Florida, Columbia University, et cetera. So I think it's fair to say that the data that is presented today has been one-sided and it has been incomplete. Now, I will focus most of my time on the remote learning because I am one of the few people and few families that have the means and have the capabilities to keep my daughter home from school. And I do that for many different reasons. Obviously, first and foremost, my daughter's health is the single most important thing to me. Secondly, it is the people that are in this room, the teachers that are in the classrooms. And I urge anybody that can and that is able to to keep your kids home so that we can keep class sizes down to a lower maximum, so that we can continue to social distance for those teachers, for those students, for those bus drivers, for all the staff that are in those schools. So if you can, please heed my advice. Now I've got a bunch of questions and I'm going to fire melt because I know I've got three minutes. What is the threshold for when schools move to remote learning? The public needs to know this. There has to be a number of how many cases are in a seven-day period or how many positive tests that we are seeing. How will remote students have the ability to seek mental health resources? Will my daughter have access to participate in the weekly group meetings that were mentioned on the slideshow? How are these remote learners going to be a part of the school community? There was a discussion about how people are going to homeschool, like myself, and how people have homeschooled. It sounds like it's, hey, we still haven't figured out a plan for that. Also, it seems more likely than not that we will be moving to a remote learning situation at some point throughout the year. So what happens to my daughter who has a teacher that isn't grade level appropriate with other students? And then we go to move to, we transition back to remote period? Is my daughter now going back to seventh graders on her team with her teachers? Or is she's going to continue to stay with the teacher that she started with? Going forward, how can you decipher between cold, flu and COVID? And can the district not require one or multiple negative tests before students or staff return? If we cannot do the testing and the contact tracing, then it's not going to be safe enough for our kids to go back. Finally, and certainly not least importantly, I am the son of a former teacher. If teachers do teach.
Thank you.
I'm going to finish this one, Jeff. If teachers do teach, what kind of, what kind of resources and what kind of hazard pay are they getting?
Thank you.
Just a second. I will entertain a motion by a board member to extend public comment. We have a policy we have to stick to and I think you'll probably get it. So if you'll be patient with us. We have a motion by Nick and a second by Brenda. All those in favor? Aye. Please continue.
Is there anybody who hasn't spoke yet who'd like to speak, please? I know you've spoke earlier today, sir. I'd just like to see if there's anybody who hasn't had a chance to speak. Now would be your time before you go, sir.
Hi, my name's Dr. Sukuk and I live at 11 Cartridge Lane. My daughter goes to East Derry. I almost didn't get up and talk because I feel like a lot of people have said a lot of what I want to say. When I first saw the plan, I was really upset because I felt like it didn't address a lot of my concerns. And as I sat back, I thought that I was being kind of selfish, that there are a lot of people whose kids need to go back to school and I understand that. And it just happens to be that my daughter isn't one of them. I have the ability to keep her home with me and we have high-risk members in our family and so I have that option. But the reason I didn't know I had that option is because it's on page 34 and it's half a page. The plan that's been put forward as an alternative learning plan, not the remote plan that was put forward as an option for you to consider, but the alternative learning plan is just not well-developed or fleshed out. And I agree with the speakers that got up and said, if it was more thorough, more parents would take that option. And if more parents take that option, the schools are safer for the kids that have to be there. If we can, if you as a group, I know, can find a solution to this, but just present a remote learning option that serves the people that are able to take that option and then I can get behind this plan for everyone and it will be safer for all the kids of Derry. Thank you.
My name is Julie. I live at 17 Silvestri Circle. And I should have said this earlier, but I didn't get a chance. I'm not afraid. It's not the teachers or the staff of the school that I'm afraid of. It's how the parents, how they, if they see a fever, they medicate them and send them to school. Anyway, with no fever, they have sniffle, the children have sniffles and coughs on the bus, don't cover their mouths. And us parents don't think they can't get this COVID. And they can't. It's not a hoax. It's actually real. And I wanted to address my concern because my son is going to be 12. He's awesome at remote learning. He's going to be entering the fifth grade. I do not want to pull him out of school. I want to keep him in the remote learning process. I just, I feel bad for all the parents, especially the younger parents. I just, I feel bad for all the parents, especially the younger parents, you know? And I just wanted to say thank you for what you have done and are doing. Thank you all.
Anybody who hasn't spoke tonight, would you like to speak? Because I know there's people who would like to, or at least one gentleman, would like to speak again, so now is your chance, before this board moves on to votes and other items in their agenda. Sir, would you like to speak?
Thank you very much, everyone. I do appreciate you letting me talk again. Dwayne Miller, 21 O'Levin Road. To the committee, you're going to vote tonight. Chances are, you're probably going to vote for Plan A. I would just kindly ask that if it's possible to see if there's other opportunities that, to make Plan A successful, that we could look at other options and expand, look at other facilities. I know that those are costs, but I would kindly ask that you at least attempt to see if there's anything there. I want my child to flourish just like everyone else. I'm scared. I have high blood pressure. I almost had a heart attack a couple months ago. So, I'm just like everyone else. I want my child to go to school, you know? I mean, all I'm asking you is to just open your minds just a little bit more, and say, yes, we're going to go to Plan A. However, we're going to look at other options. We're going to look at the, all the different schools, the elementary and the middle schools, and see, can we truly meet the criteria, so that, so that the teachers can feel safe, that the students aren't uncomfortable, because they're in a classroom and they're scared to go home and bring something to their, to their family members? I'm just asking you to open your minds. It's all I'm asking. You're going to vote. I believe in you. I'm just asking.
Lisa Hulker, 75 Warner Hill Road, again. Thank you again for allowing us extra time to speak. I'd like to, I would really like an answer to the gentleman's question who asked, what's going to happen to the kid who starts off in school, has to go out for 10 days because they had a sniffle, ends up with a remote teacher, goes back to school, ends up with, I don't know, a stomach virus, is out for another 10 days, ends up with a remote teacher, ends up back, and where's the continuity for those children? And I would also like to finish the question that I was asking earlier about the remote learning plan that's being offered. Again, we've talked all about the kids that need to be in school, and that is so important for so many kids. But the kids who have medical issues and their parents are not comfortable sending them to school are now being faced with, do I put my kid in a room where they're not going to be challenged with a teacher they may or may not ever meet? They're not going to have the opportunity to be with any of their classmates, or their teachers, or possibly even work on their own level and be mixed in with other grades. It's so far from where it needs to be, so far, that it's not even an option for most parents. So, I understand that you came here to vote today. I'm asking you to not vote today. We have five weeks, a lot of work, and I know you've already done so much, and your summers, I mean, we all had other things we wanted to do this summer, and you guys have already done so much. I'm asking you to take another week, maybe two, flush out some of these other ideas, and look at some options, just to try and level that playing field a little bit more. Thank you.
Hello? I just want to address the remote learning plan just for a moment. First of all, it's July 28th. There's been a, as you've all expressed, a lot of time and energy put into a tremendous amount of logistics and a plan and a presentation, so that we could be here tonight. If we get a vote that says we're going forward, the next step is we put a lot more time that we will have, because now we have a plan, into what this remote learning is going to look like. But we don't know what teachers are going to be in the buildings, what teachers are not going to be in the buildings. We don't know the number of students that are going to be there. And I'll tell you right now, no matter what we do, remote learning is not going to be as good as face-to-face. That's why we want our children to go back to the schools. That's why schools are the way they are. That's otherwise, we have technology. We could have remote learning 10 years ago, maybe, hmm, five years ago. But our infrastructure, we've done a great job. Dr. Dancy's done a fantastic job, his predecessor has. We've increased tremendously. We're just not there yet. Third-largest school district in the state of New Hampshire. Budget restraints that we all have been talking about since 2008. We will absolutely, if we get a vote and we go forward with this plan and get the kids back in school, we will be diligently working on the best possible scenario for remote learning. But we, we don't even know numbers. We don't know what teachers, we've got middle school, subject area teachers that we've got to deal with, okay, a social studies teacher's out, but who's going to teach remote math? There's so many logistics. It's mind-boggling. Every step of the way, this has been mind-boggling. And believe me, we care about every comment that's come up here, every comment that has been given, every question that's been asked, every email, every phone call, and we take it all into consideration. And we do have to rely on people like our experts. And rely on them caring as much as we know they do for our kids as well. So, we need to, we need to vote, we need to move on, we need to have a plan, so that now, over these next few weeks, we've got teachers coming back shortly, we've got students coming back shortly, we've got to be ready for it, so.
And to address the 10-day issue, it's like an absence of 10 days. So, what we would need to do as educators is develop a temporary remote learning plan. That's basically what it's called. And that would be our job as educators in this district, to develop a temporary 10-day remote learning plan, or however many days a student is out for with that same educator, or that same, you know, team teacher, or the same classroom teacher, you know, depending on what grade level that child is in. So I hope that answers your question about the 10-day in, 10-day out. If that child starts in Plan A, if it's Plan A, if the child starts in Plan B, Option One, same thing, child's classroom teacher. They start in a remote setting, it's obviously very different. So I hope that answers your, that question about 10 days.
Sorry, I'm back. Yeah. I wanted to kind of talk about the elephant in the room, actually, the elephant that was out in the parking lot when I walked in. I've been in your seats. I understand, School Board, and how it works. I've been in negotiations with the Teachers Union. I understand the way the union works. You have a staff, and I'm not going to speak for any of them specifically, but I've developed relationships and friendships with staff over the years. I've been in this district for 16 years. You have a staff of teachers, paras, and staff in general, who are scared to death to come back to work. You need to be talking to them more, and you need to be giving them a voice, and making sure that voice is heard. Because, yeah, you can offer some of them early retirement, you can fire some of them, figure out a way to do it, you can let them quit, whatever. You've got people that have a passion for teaching, who are good teachers, who I adore, who this crowd adores, and you need to make sure that those voices are heard. Because at the end of the day, we can send our kids back to school. We need to have people there who love them, adore them, cherish them, will care for them, and will educate them to the best of their ability. And if they're scared to death to come back into a classroom, you've got to deal with that.
My number-one concern is students. And I apologize to every teacher out there, but you are not my number-one concern. Everybody in this district has chosen a selfless profession. I happen to have a son-in-law who just finished his fifth year of residency, and goes into work every day and works with COVID patients. He's, he's a surgical resident, but they needed him to handle the COVID ward, and he did that. And he came home, and he stripped off his clothes, he went right in the shower, he did what he had to do, and he got up the next morning, and he went into that hospital and worked with those COVID patients. There is risk, and there's a lot of people out here that have said that. And there's teachers out here who have said, it's time to go back. We are in a selfless profession. Students come first, and they come before the parents as well. And right now, this task force, and all of these task forces, listened to everybody, gave everybody, all stakeholders had representation. But number one, it came down to what is best for kids. And when we hear from the professionals, if we are going to go back, now is the time to do it. And I agree with that wholeheartedly. We need our children back in the schools, and we have painstakingly worked and spent money and did all sorts of things to make sure that we could make those schools as safe as possible. But there are no guarantees. It's time to do your job. And I do believe that the majority of our staff is willing to come in and do what's best for kids, because that's what they've always done.
Laura from Japani, Kristen Drive again. I would like to share with the group that I am someone who works for a company who employs folks, who works with people who have addiction disorders. And we took that same stance with a lot of our counselors. Come to work, we want you there. You have to be there, you have to do it, period, end of story. This was your line of work, you chose it, walk in the door. And they quit. And it fully impacted our patients, and they couldn't get treated. Is that what we want to happen here? It sure as heck not. It's not what I want to happen, and that was my reality. It could very well be yours, and I'm just going to leave it at that.
Hi, my name is Amity Ziegler. I live at 4 Walden Drive. I fully appreciate all the time and energy and effort and discussion and debate that has gone into developing these plans. I know everybody cares about the students, they care about our community, they care about our teachers, even when the students are the number-one priority. And I fully appreciate that. I also work at a company that currently has a vaccine for COVID-19 in clinical trials. We care about COVID-19, we care about treating people. But what we're not doing is rushing into bringing people back to work. We're thinking about very slowly. I think Plan A has a lot of benefits. I do have concerns with having two days for, to see how it goes, to adjust before more students come back. I believe that students need to be there. I'm not sure how I feel about it with my kids, with having high-risk people at home, but I do think that there's a benefit to that. But if teachers are concerned, if parents are concerned, I personally am not seeing, and I would love to hear more, to understand what the drawback would be, instead of taking two days, maybe a week, now bring a couple more grades back, now maybe another week, bring a couple more grades back, so that teachers, administrators, custodians have time to see how it's working, adjust, and then make modifications to the plan in a way that makes, maybe it's a little bit more slower and makes sense. So if, maybe you could explain a little bit more why two days is enough? That might help me feel better, but for me, it feels really fast. Thank you.
So I, sorry, I do have one idea of why it's a little bit imperative to start now. We actually ran statistics from our office, trying to plan for what's coming up ahead. And October 15th, October 15th is when our acute visits of colds and coughs and flu goes through the roof. That's, that's when our switch flips. And I don't know if that's when the COVID switch is going to flip, but that's when kids staying home is going to start, and it's going to be very hard to differentiate between the illnesses. And that's why I think that starting things more quickly before we hit that roadblock of mid-October is important for us to try to do.
I just wanted to have a chance to read my last sentence before I cut off, since I get it. I wanted to clarify, because at the very end, I'd said that I was for full day, it made it sound like, and I just wanted to clarify that. I'd said, my hope is that with full day on the table, families who can do full remote, like we will, will therefore lessen the burden in the classroom and the exposure that the teachers and the staff face. So I'm kind of reiterating what Sue had said, that she's hoping that people will choose to do remote if they can. I hope that when they're formulating the remote plan, that they maybe incorporate V-Lax, because I've heard some great things about that, that can supplement. If people don't want to withdraw their kids and do full homeschooling, that they can combine it with that. In a perfect world, we would have real-time learning happening in the class at home, which is what Lisa said, but it doesn't sound like we have the technology with that, so maybe we can catch up and do something like that. I don't want my children to be left behind, but I'm also not at all comfortable sending them in right now. So, while it sounds like it's going full remote, I mean, a full day, I will be doing remote. And I'm kind of irritated, and I understand where you're coming from, saying that the children come first, but over the years, the teachers have started with, they were teachers, now they're teachers and counselors, now they're teachers and counselors, and they run the fire drills, teachers and counselors, fire drill, now we're active shooter drills, now it's teacher, counselor, fire drill, active shooter drill, and now we're adding on this to it. And I don't think that it's fair to say that their concerns and their needs don't get put on the same level with these kids. That does not seem right to me. And just as a side note, with that being said, I don't want to sound smug when I say this, but good luck finding subs to cover these classes. As it is now, there's a handful of us, when people are out, that we go in, and there's always a sub shortage. Most of them, I know, are retired and they're elderly teachers. I'm one of a few on the younger side that go in all the time. I won't be going in. It's going to be hard picking to find people to cover these classes. So that's just why I wanted to finish up.
Okay, I have one last question from the phones. This is a quick one, I think. Kim Patrellis calls in. Deep was not included in tonight's presentations. The roadmap shows the same option for three plans.
And Kim, if you're listening, you can call me tomorrow, and I'll talk to you more specifically about that. But Deep is addressed in the plan, right from the beginning in Plan A. It starts out with going back to school reopening. It has PK, our preschoolers, in there to begin the school year, just like everybody else, the three- and four-year-olds. If we end up going a hybrid, which we did when we went to remote, we will take care of that option, too. If a parent at Deep wants to keep their child home, then we will make provisions for that with those parents and those students. So, it is addressed, just like it's PK through eighth grade.
So it is addressed just like it's PK through eighth grade. That's our school district.
I think just to specify, the pre-K students will start on their given day, so that will naturally occur over the phase-in, that they will each start one day and then they're out, then the, you know, so the Wednesday students will start, the Thursday students will start on the Thursday, and on the Tuesday, you know, you'll have all of the students in, and it will actually start, you know, prior to that.
All right, any further public comment? Okay, I know if there were any callers that couldn't get through, you can call either your principal or the SAU office with any questions you may have. Final check, anybody else? Okay, we certainly appreciate everyone coming out and being very patient with us through our technical difficulties and the heat and everything. Awesome feedback by everyone, really well thought out. We really appreciate everyone that's here, the teachers that are inside and that were outside earlier, we appreciate all of them, and the board will deliberate at this point. Okay, folks, anybody have any comments up front?
Chair, should we make a motion to close public comment on that matter?
We have a motion to close public comment, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, public comment period is closed at this point.
I just want to ask a quick question. It looks like on the schedule, we would deliberate on this agenda item before hearing from the teachers, and I wonder if we should hear from the teachers before we deliberate on this agenda item?
I have no problem changing that, anybody else?
Chair, would take an amendment to, or a change in the, to revise the schedule. Myself, I'd just soon go ahead and see if we can wrap this up, but I may be in the minority there.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the agenda to place the vote after item six. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Me.
Abstentions? Motion passes. I would further motion to move Agenda Item Five past Item Six, since most likely that vote is going to be based on our vote. So I'll make that motion, is there a second? Wait a second, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, we have a presentation or visit from the Dairy Education Association. We kind of threw them up here quickly, so if you need a minute to get organized, that's Can we get a second mic up front there, please?
It's drier than ever.
Can you hear me? I'm Meg Moosberry, I'm the president of the Dairy Education Association. I'm also a parent who has a fifth grader currently at South Range, and I'm a taxpayer in dairy. Go ahead, Dave, you want to introduce yourself?
My name is Dave Levesque. I am a computer teacher here at Gilbert H. Hood, and I'm the first vice president of the Dairy Education Association.
We've come here tonight to share with you the concerns the dairy educators have with the reentry plans now being proposed to this board. Let's first be clear, these proposed plans are reentry plans, not reopening plans. Education did not come to a stop on March 16th when the buildings closed. Education continued. Teachers performed heroic feats of converting their instruction to online learning in less than a week, and ought to continue to educate students from March 16th until June 5th. Now, five months later, we're looking at reentry. Many people, including some of those present tonight, participated in various school and district task force committees, and their efforts are appreciated. However, as we review the alternatives that were considered, we are shocked that the comprehensive task force is recommending Option A. As it stands, this plan is fraught with concerns for educators of dairy, concerns for the safety of our students, their families, ourselves, and all staff. Dairy teachers want nothing more than to be in front of their students face-to-face. However, return to school cannot mean business as usual at this time. Schools must look and be very different from what existed prior to COVID-19, and ought to provide the necessary level of health and safety for all members of the educational community. The teachers of this district have dedicated their entire careers to improving their craft through continual training and learning. That's what teachers do. Teachers want to be with their students, that's where the greatest satisfaction in teaching is found. But students need to be, teachers need to be able to teach safely, without having to worry about their health and the health of their students and family. Reading through the district's reentry plan, we have found many inconsistencies and deficiencies. This plan does not satisfy even the minimal levels of risk avoidance. The inadequate health and safety guidelines it offers will put students, teachers, and staff, and all of our families at greatly elevated risk. People will become sick as a result, and some people may die.
I must first begin by saying this is probably the hardest thing I've done in my 20-year career in education. It's hard not to get emotional about this process, the stuff we're going through. Teachers want to be in front of their students, it's what we do. And when I start to look at this plan, I start to ask, what is it that we know? I was happy to report that I wrote down some new things that I didn't know that were mentioned, mentioned by the professionals. See, because teachers never stop learning. But part of that learning, and part of what we know when we're doing this, the ultimate thing we have heard from our members, that we are scared. The attitude of just go do your job is not fair. The Patriots had 21 people quit today, not coming back next year. Are they doing their job? No, they're scared. Baseball hasn't even lasted one weekend before they quit, and they're tested and funded by billionaires, tested every day. So we're asked to listen and look at all this data, all the stuff that we talk about. I'm a teacher, I'm not a medical doctor. Our teachers are not doctors of medicine. We have a counterpoint point for everything. Our experts even said we need a robust data, we need more robust data in this. I learned that today. No kidding. Robust data that looks at this age group that we're dealing with. What else do we know today? We know that the bus drivers will have six-foot of distancing between the students on the bus and the driver. But our current plan asks us to be three feet from our students. So inconsistencies all over this. And let me remind you, we are scared. We know that, there's so many things that have been said tonight. Dr. Chan released today on MUR, 80% of our new cases are in Hillsborough and Rockingham County. We applaud that we only have 23 positive COVID cases currently in dairy. That's 23 of somebody's lives going through whatever changes. I don't know what the percentages were, I didn't write them down, but what percent is your child? What percent is our teachers? The other thing I need to ask, we mentioned and we hear this plan needs to go forward for a vote. Our teachers have not been asked until yesterday, yesterday, where they are not, we are healthy enough to come back to work, or if there are situations that would prevent us from coming back to work, health, family, yesterday, and the vote is today, on a plan that, I'm sorry, you don't even know if you can fulfill because there's not enough teachers made, potentially. So this vote might be all for not, I don't know. But we don't even know. I can say that of our members that we polled on July 20th, I'm sorry, we polled them?
July 20th.
July 20th?
Yep.
Sorry, July 20th. 55% of our members who answered the survey said they think they had either a conflict with schedule, or their own kids, and their own plans, and the hybrids, and then this, or health issues. Confidentiality, we didn't ask what the health issues were, but we say half of our members believe they have a condition that will prevent them from coming back. That's what we know today. The other thing I keep hearing is, and we know this, that everyone has a different level of comfortability with taking risks. I'm not taking my mask off, some people do when they talk, you're comfortable with that. Great. I don't scold you for it, I don't applaud you for it, it's your choice. But risk has to be with each individual person. If they don't feel safe, they have to ask, is it worth the risk that I'm taking? So again, we don't even know how many children are going to opt for what plan, so we can't even match teachers and students yet, because we don't know what that is going to look like. So again, there's a lot more here for me to do, I'm going to try my best to just summarize it and go through, but there's been so much said, so much done, that I'll try to keep to the script. We look in this gym, and I want you to ask yourself this question as I ask it. Why are you using six-foot of social distancing and wearing a mask as part of the requirements of this meeting? You're using it, and hopefully you answered, that these are the safety guidelines that we have adopted and followed all summer long, in every aspect of the public that you go to, every place you visit. If you said that, we agree with you. So why is the meeting tonight being livestreamed? Because some people are not comfortable to be here, or feel safe to be here. This is true of our teachers, families, staff. We know that. We also know that, according to the CDC guideline that's recommended, and this were the considerations for the K-12 schools readiness and planning tool, printed right from their site. I'm only going to read the one that says highest risk. Full-size, in-person classes, activities and events, students are not spaced apart, share classroom materials or supplies, and mix between classes and activities. I am a unified arts teacher in this school. On a normal day, 120 or so students will come to my room a day. If this blocks scheduling, I would assume that's cut in half, that's 60. Mixed group, cohort group, as a unified arts teacher. One other quick comparison I would like to do, if we stop and think about, we heard about going out and going into different places of public, Cannibale Lake Park, Santa's Village, Storyland, Water Country, all these places have capacity size limits, every single one of them, six feet of social distancing, every single one of them. Face coverings from age three and up. If you don't want to go there, or if your kid can't wear it, you don't go. I'm not saying that here at school, I want to teach your child, we want to teach your child. But when I compare the Dairy Cooperative School District Plan, and it says, do we have capacity limits? Nope. If it's business as usual, which we know it's not, and everybody were to come to school under Option A, in a computer lab that I teach, so back to pre-COVID time, students will be 18 inches apart. They could elbow their neighbor if I have 25 kids in my class. Something to think about. So what is it that we don't know? As you can see, our standards are all over the place. The children have learned all summer long that six feet social distancing, wear a mask, they've been learning and teaching that. You come to school, you don't have to follow the same rules. The rules are less at school. I also learned, and I'm not quite sure, that, so I kind of didn't know what bullet to put it on, is the social distancing three feet or four feet? Because the plan says three feet, but I heard one of the doctors say we're four feet. So I wasn't sure about that. And let's mind you, three feet, move your chairs closer, three feet, and what happens if I walk by? I'm not three feet away from anyone if I stop to help a kid, I'm inches. And not only am I inches away from that child, they're not wearing a mask. And I thought we wore masks, or at least that's what I learned this summer, to help That I wore a mask to prevent somebody else from catching it, and they wore masks to help So again, has every board member in this room, including the panel, has every single member in this room tried to sit three feet apart in a classroom setting? Because there was a great presentation and news coverage in a neighboring state, and when they were sitting three feet apart, it didn't feel comfortable to them. We heard, thankfully, that the HVAC systems, they're being tested, have they been tested yet? Do we know the answer to that question? Like, we know the efficiency ratings of them, they're up and running, they're operating, we know that as of today. And you can answer that how you would like, Mr. Chairman. What about the heat in the buildings? Today, I think we've been here, what, almost three hours? You're halfway through a day, school day, and the sun's been gone for about two hours. I think on this floor, I teach in this building, it could probably get close to 95 on the second floor. Without fans, I'm sure it'll be more. Now you got to wear that mask all day, so yes, I feel bad for the students if they have to wear them in that heat, we got to wear them as well. We talked a little bit about nurse, so we don't know about the nurse being isolated. We talked a little bit about nurse, so we don't know about the nurse being isolated. Should the nurse have to isolate a student, a COVID student? Where does that take place? We don't have enough buildings or rooms to have that happen. How do other students get medical services if the nurse is in isolation? And again, we keep coming back to what's the decision tree for closing a school? On my way here tonight, I found out, or I heard, Tuckaway Tavern had a staff member today test positive. Today, one person, they closed. Because they want, they want their customers to know that it's safe. But yet we can't even definitively define, if we have one case, either from a student or a teacher or a staff, we don't know if we're closing. So there's a whole lot of this that we don't know. The things that we do know, it changes by the minute. There was another gentleman that says the data changes so quick, tomorrow might be something different. You called it the elephant in the room. The teachers were standing out there. Your teachers are scared. If that makes you upset, I'm sorry. It will not be business as usual, we know that. And by pushing us away more does not help. And at the end of the day, when I leave my day at work, I want to be sure I can go home and safely do that. If that means I have to wear scrubs, I'll wear scrubs. If it means I gotta take a shower, I'll do whatever it takes. But these guidelines in option A do not go far enough when we know, we know, because we practiced it all summer, that there are safer guidelines that can be mandated and implemented in the plan.
Dave's a tough act to follow at this point, but I will try to sum it up. So what a teacher's concerned about, there's concern about dying. I handed you a, to the board members, I handed you a petition that was written, and we had a hundred and ninety-one or ninety-two, a hundred and ninety-one or a hundred and ninety-two teachers sign it. And that's only been within the last twenty-four hours. Lots of our teachers are on vacation and rightfully so. So some didn't get it. They're also, they're not, they're concerned about dying, but what else are they concerned about? They're concerned about those students that we heard so much about. They don't want their students to get sick. They don't want to see a student die in their classroom because they came in and brought COVID in. Teachers are worried about bringing COVID home to their families. They're concerned that the fear of life or death will impact their students. How would you like to go to school every day and think, I might kill somebody today? They're concerned that we're setting the wrong example. A couple of things I've heard through the night is about, you know, people saying that remote is an option for some of us, some of us can, can keep our children home, so that'll reduce the number of kids in school. Is that an equitable education? Because I don't think so. I think if we are pushing parents to keep their kids home, to keep them safe, then we're not providing them with an equitable education. And it's not just the kids who are in individual education plans, that's a free and appropriate education. I'm talking about an equitable education. As a parent, as a person who's raising a ten-year-old, we haven't made that decision yet, but we are heavily laying on the, leaning on the side of keeping her home, because it's not safe. And that's what teachers are concerned about, they're concerned about the safety, they're concerned about equity. And we gave you, Derek has a list of the, the hundred and ninety-two people that signed it. And the last thing I want to say is, Dave mentioned that today there was eighty percent, eighty percent of the new cases came in Hillsborough and Rockingham County. Six of them were children. So as I know Dr. Peterson and Dr. Hadrick have said, kids don't necessarily get it, but that's, you know, their, their references, we could probably find six that go against it. It's changing every day, and not to disparage you guys, you know, I've been on the committee with you. It's to say that we don't know what we don't know, and that opening up for a hundred percent is scary, not only as a parent, but as a teacher. And for all of those teachers that came out here tonight on a ninety-five-degree night and stood outside with signs telling you they were scared, please understand that they are frightened.
And just one last closing thought. We know schools will not be the same. I don't teach elementary, although we do have some children who become emotional here at school, or the kids crying off the bus. I can't go up to that kid and hug them, because I don't know, I don't think that's safe, and it's definitely too close. But how, if we as teachers are not feeling safe, can we comfort the same child in our room who also doesn't feel safe? And I want you to think of that. Thank you, good night.
Thank you, Mr. Levesque and Ms. Morseberry, we appreciate you coming. Okay, folks, we have a vote on our hands here. We have a recommendation from our superintendent to proceed with Plan A. So before we can get into discussion on that, we need to get the motion on the floor, please. So. Hello?
So I just want to point out a couple things. You may think it's ridiculous, I don't, you know, we have kids that are going to be in our classrooms throughout the day. Kids touch everything. I think that sometimes we don't realize what we touch during the day, think of how many times we've learned that we touch our faces and such. But there's a lot of things that, that we have the ability to place our hands on. As we sit here tonight, over the course of this meeting, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight microphones set up, plus the one up front. To the far left, we've touched that microphone three times, two different people. The second one, we've touched that six times, four different people. We have not used mic three, mic four. Mic five over here, we've touched two times. Mic six, we've touched two times. Mic seven, we've touched five times, three people used it, we wiped it once, and it has been touched eight additional times by three people. Like, we don't think about this stuff because it's not normal, right? We don't think like, I use that, so I'm going to wipe it off. If we're putting kids in our classroom and we're thinking about all the things that we're going to touch, and the things that we're going to do, we have to be real diligent about cleaning and cleanliness. I lost my dad to COVID, I'll be honest about that. He had liver cirrhosis, it was an underlying condition, right? But like, he's gone because of that disease. I don't know where he got it, but we're putting these kids in the classroom, and we're not necessarily requiring face masks, we're saying, well, we're going to maybe come up with a break, or you know, if they're this close to each other. I think that there's a lot of kids that belong in school. I think it's really good for a lot. But I think if we did, Austin, like you spoke to, have a more robust plan upfront for parents to really make that choice, like, you know, my kid really needs to go to school, or I'm capable of having them home. I think we could limit the amount of people that are in the schools, it would allow us to have a better, more robust, comprehensive in-school plan if we offered something that's more tangible online. It's just things that I've noticed since being here.
I'll make the motion to move forward with Plan A for the purpose of discussion.
Motion by Brenda, do you have a second?
I, I didn't hear the whole, the whole motion, but I'm presuming she's. Very good, seconded.
Motion is seconded by Lynn. Thank you, Nick. Lynn, have any?
Yeah. It's not to be dismissive of points that have been made here this evening. I think myself, you know, having an inside track, Mrs. Legu can attest to this, that sometimes you get a lot more knowledge on the school board than you would the general public, and the general public would have more of a layman's concept and concerns and worries about something moving forward. And when a school board individual that has a tighter connection to the admin team might have more insight or knowledge. What I'm trying to convey is that I have more confidence in addressing the concerns that folks that have asked for delay have asked for. So I'm confident that the admin team, the superintendent, in addressing this layout have these concepts and concerns on the plate going forward. I also know the timeframe, the relevance, five weeks goes by quickly, you've got schools that may or may not open depending on when this vote happens, but I think also it's important that we come to a conclusion on this Plan A in order to get more action in regards to some of the concerns that the parents and the DEA have expressed this evening. So that's kind of my overview of the comments that I've heard this evening, and I'll relinquish the mic right now, thank you.
Erica?
So I came here with a long list of questions, I just counted them, there were sixteen of them, and a bunch of you answered a bunch of my, asked a bunch of my questions, but not all of them. But the big question I have, that I haven't heard an answer to yet, and really hinges my decision, is if we're going to have kids take off their masks, I think we need to have a more robust discussion about what kind of dividers, if any, there are going to be, if kids are sitting at tables, or if kids are sitting at desks. Because with three feet distance, if someone sneezes left or right, I'm not sure parents will be fully comfortable, and I, as a parent, I've worn this now for almost six hours, I've never worn this for six hours before. So that's my big question, but then I have other smaller questions, like if we're encouraging people not to be on the bus, but maybe their carpool, if that carpool is for kids that aren't all in the same class, what does that mean if something happens to one of them? So I still have unanswered questions, I'm sure you people have unanswered questions, I just want you to know one thing, which is that we don't make these decisions lightly, I don't make these decisions lightly, I read this three times to make a list of questions. I have kids in this school system too, I care about my kids, I care about the teachers, I care about the district, and I understand that not everyone has the same choices when it comes to childcare and staying home. And I just hope that people understand how much thought we've all put into this, regardless of whether we agree with you or not.
Thank you, Erica. Brenda?
So I, I would really like it if someone would address, sorry, I would really like it if someone would address the three-feet, six-feet situation, because being part of the task force, I know that most of our schools are six feet. I believe we have one school with one grade, and please correct me if I'm wrong, this is what I know from what I know, but I may not know. One grade in one school that is four and a half feet. So can somebody clarify that, because the, the three-feet thing is, is really becoming an issue, and I don't believe that it's factual at this point.
Jane, you think you have that data, don't you?
Brenda, there are classes that are four feet, four and a half feet, we have some that measure out five and a half feet and six feet. So there are, there are none that would be at three feet. When they measured out some of the classrooms at three feet, you could fit forty, more than forty students at three feet, which we would never have that many students in that space. So none of them, none of the plans are.
People heard forty kids and they were like, wait, what? So when.
If you measured, if you measured a specific room and you had every three feet, but, so none of our plans have students at three feet.
And, and to furthermore discuss that, we've discussed computer lab classrooms, first of all, now that students will have one-to-one devices, we have discussed that on our task force a number of times, that there would be no need to use the computer labs for what they are currently designed for. Secondarily, at three feet, it was measured out, we could put about twenty students in. And so we have decided to repurpose those computer lab classrooms. Therefore, how you measured it, Dave, I'm sure was accurate in terms of your current student population. But how we have designed would be to repurpose those classrooms, because there would be no need to use those computer lab classrooms as they are such set up as of today.
Anything further, Brenda?
Okay. So I understand all of your point about the phase-in. And I, in my head, agree with it. And first of all, I have to say, there is not one person in this community, in a school, in a child, anywhere, that I want to die. And I don't appreciate people saying that to me. It's been very upsetting, I absolutely, I believe in the plan, I believe in our district to do the right thing, but that doesn't mean I want anybody to die, okay? I had to get that out. I'm wondering if we could alter this plan so that there's a little bit longer phase-in. And I know I'm throwing a giant monkey wrench into the works, and I'm just going to throw it out there. So what if, and I also believe that we should be wearing masks, but that's a whole nother story for not, not right now. What if we took pre-K, K-1 and 2 and 6? Because these are the children who need to come in and meet their teachers, understand the school, learn who's in their room, learn all the things that go on in school, coming into school, getting out of school. They've not, most of them haven't been in, in an elementary school, and the sixth graders haven't been in a middle school. So it would be if they could have that opportunity to learn the school, get comfortable with it, get comfortable with their teachers, the expectations, with a little bit longer time alone, without the other grades, that would be great. So this is my really like scribbled plan. So if, if pre-K, K-1 and 2 and 6 could be in school, August thirty-first, September first, September second, and possibly the third, or maybe they get an extra long weekend, that's just a thought. And then the next week, September eighth, there's no school on Monday, so September eighth, three, four and five come in, and seven and eight come in, so there's at least been a little bit of time between all of those children coming into school, and it also gives the little ones more more time to adjust to being in school, and our staff to adjust to whatever concerns they have, or whatever fears they might have. Maybe that's, that may work a little bit, I, I don't know, and I know I just threw a giant monkey wrench into everything. But I, I think maybe at least it could work a little bit, and I also do think that we need to require masks. I understand that some people don't want to wear them, I don't want to wear it when I'm talking, because I've watched meetings when you can't hear people through their mask. But I do think we need to require them, I have a three-year-old grandson and a two-and-a-half-year-old granddaughter, and they wear a mask. They know that they're not supposed to touch it, I'm not going to say they don't, but they're pretty good about it. But they're being taught that, they're, it's, it's not, here's a mask, you're going to wear it, they've been taught that this is what you have to do. They're being taught to wash their hands and sing happy birthday. It's a process, and we are going to be part of that process for our kids, we're going to be part of the process that says, you know, here's, here's proper mask-wearing, and maybe we're going to have to have our nurses teaching our educators how that, how to tell them how to wear a mask, or how not to wear a mask. I agree with whoever said about people in the grocery store, this is how they wear their mask, or this is how they wear their mask, that does nothing. So I don't know, I, I know that I just like kind of threw a monkey wrench into things.
Actually, you didn't, because that was actually the first recommendation made to the task force by someone was a phase-in model of three weeks. And, and that recommendation was not accepted. So we went back to the. not accepted. So we went back to the drawing board. So it was actually a three-week phase in, which I understand was too long, considering what the rate of transmission was at that time and continues to be. So it was an elongated phase in?
So for me, it's more of a, it's a comfort level for the parents who are going to send their children into school. Not everybody can keep their children home. We have a lot of families who need to go to work, whether they're frontline workers, or whether they work at the grocery store. They need to go to work. They don't have the option of staying home. So we need to, we need to think about everybody, right? And I'm also thinking about the remote learners. We had a task force to build this plan. Maybe we could have a task force that includes some parents to talk about the remote learning and what they have seen and what they didn't see in the process of when we went to remote. And I'm not going to say anybody did anything wrong then, because I have nothing but the utmost respect for this entire district, for the way we went out, because we were told it was the right time to do it, and we did it. And we also educated children, and to the best of our ability. I know that some things were not perfect. I know some people didn't love remote. But we did what we had to do, because our kids are here to be educated. So, you know, maybe we need to have a deeper conversation about remote. And it may be that we don't understand what people don't know. I love the fact that we're going to help parents understand Chromebooks, because as you know, I talked to a couple of moms who were really having a hard time. And our tech department was more than willing to step up and help them. But we don't know what we don't know either, right? We don't know that people don't work on a Chromebook, or don't know how to move from one platform to another. So now we know, and now we can help them do that. So I think a lot of good things have come out. And I still think we can work with Plan A, because the intention of adopting a plan is to know that you're going to have to pivot it. And I'm so tired of pivot. I wanted to come up with a different word, but I didn't. But you've got to be able to tweak it. You've got to be able to be flexible, and you've got to be able to move to whatever comes our way. And I really hope it doesn't come our way. We're not Florida. We didn't open up like all the states that are having a problem. Hopefully, you know, we do stay with the numbers that we have. And hopefully, our governor continues to do the work that he's doing to keep people in certain distances and opening up the way he is. But we also need to figure it out. So I don't know. There you go. There's my thoughts.
So, and I do want to, I guess, emphasize that masks in the plan are required for students. And the caveat to that, Chris Su, and Matt, you may speak to this more eloquently than me, is if students were at their desks, and they were greater than three feet, then they did not have to wear them at that time, if they were in their, like, educational bubble, as I believe you called it. I believe that was the caveat to the mask face covering requirement at that time.
Right. And just so you know, from the Department of Public Health, and we have meetings every Friday, the school nurses in the state, and Dr. Chan's on there for questions. And for contact tracing, if a child was to become positive, that the contact tracing would go to anybody who's had close contact. Close contact is determined by anybody who's spent more than 15 minutes closer than six feet with or without a mask. So, you know, the masks, really cloth masks are helpful. We know from studies, Lanson and Alllett, that they do decrease, you know, transmission. But the contact tracing has nothing, doesn't matter whether you have a face covering on or not. If you've been less than six feet for greater than 15 minutes, those are the people they're going to want to know. So, you know, I just verified that, I spoke to Chris, but that's what the CDC says.
I think it comes down to, we don't know what we don't know. But we do know masks work. And I'm with Brenda on this one, where I understand what that report she just said. We know that six feet, and anything under six feet, according to the Academy of Pediatrics, the one that they keep saying is three feet approaches the benefits of six feet, particularly if students are wearing face coverings. So it repeats it there. When we weigh the benefits of anything less than six feet, it's when we're weighing it against the potential downside if remote learning is the only alternative. Right now, we have three plans in front of us. Remote is not the only alternative. We came up with a hybrid plan too.
Yes.
I also want to talk about the emerging data with zero to nine-year-olds. I agree, it is promising, and I think it's something that we need to keep in mind, especially when we're talking about children who need to be in school, parents who need their children in school. Those are things that we need to keep in mind. In the Plan B that we have in front of us, you see that the task force took that and said that kindergarten and second would still be, would still be full-time. I think that with the zero to nine data that we have at the moment, we might be able to bring third and fourth into that. But you look at the conflicting data on the 10 to 19-year-olds. I agree with Dr. Heiduk that I wish it was more split. I wish we could have our middle school, you know, versus our high school numbers, because I do believe that once you get higher up, it does, they do transmit like adults. But we don't have that right now. We don't know what we don't know. Right here in that same document, it said that there is likely greater impact of physical distancing on risk reduction of COVID in secondary schools than early childhood and elementary education. The first recommendation in physical distancing for risk mitigation in our secondary school is universal face coverings in middle and high school when you cannot maintain six feet. The only thing that we can guarantee six feet right now is the hybrid option. I do not want the hybrid option as a permanent thing going forward. But if we can use that as a stepping stone getting into Plan A, with our plan going towards Plan A. New Hampshire has done a great job at flattening the curve. How did we do that? We shut it down, and we slowly opened it up with essentials first. Those are our kids in special programs, the NECC. Those are the ones, the ones with IEPs where we are not able to meet their needs in remote. We invite them back five days a week. But everyone else, we gradually do it. Thank you for pointing out that October 15th was, that, I was wondering, I knew there was a date in there where the cold and flu season kind of bumps up. And my original thought was that we go through to the end of October as some sort of phasing in program, because I do not agree that two days is enough. I agree more with yours, like, a week in there. I think we need to phase in, whether it be with cohorts phasing in, or whether it be with a hybrid model phasing in. We did well in New Hampshire by phasing in. And I think that we need to do that now. And Plan A, right now, as written, does not offer a gradual enough approach going forward.
Thank you, Jess. Michelle?
My head is railing right now, unbelievably. First of all, I want to thank the doctors for all of your insight tonight. I thought that was amazing. My sister is a nurse. She's been a nurse for almost 40 years. I based my decision, my opinions, not solely on my sister, being a frontline ER nurse, but I do respect and obviously love her very much. And I also based my decision on, I have three daughters. One, my poor graduate of Pinkerton High School, 2020, came into this world during 9/11 and went out during a pandemic. So my heart breaks for these 2020 graduates as well. And I have a sophomore, and I have another senior. So I have another graduate coming up, who also is going to have a, you know, unfortunate year, because we don't know what's going to happen here. My decision for Option A was, again, just based on, I think we have done due diligence. I 100% was going to completely say what Brenda said. I actually like our approach on how we are doing this. I think it's very tangible. But I do want, or I would like to see, the phasing in a little bit wider spread, as far as bringing the other grades back. So I was going to completely echo what Brenda said, as far as all that goes. I do think it's a tangible plan, again, basing my decision on what I, what we all know. I am not an essential worker. I have not stopped working, though. The company I work for, they were considered essential. I have not stopped working since March. I've been going in every day. I did not collect any extra money on unemployment. I did not get a stimulus check. I had to work. I had no options. So I lost my second job due to COVID. I work at the gym at night. Most of you may know that. I just got that job back just a couple of months ago. We have been full-on. I have gone to the grocery store more than I can ever even imagine going to the grocery store. I've been cooking every night to avoid going out to eat. So, I mean, I'm doing my due diligence as an individual, wearing my mask when, you know, you're supposed to, and what have you. So, again, we don't know, like Jessica said, what we don't know. It's a flu. Everybody that is susceptible to the flu is going to be even more susceptible, obviously, to COVID. So the flu kills thousands of people per year. COVID is killing thousands of people in the United States. I like our numbers. Again, I'm going to echo again what the elementary-level kids, we have very, very, I think it's like 0.1% or, it's a very low percentage for kids in the age range of zero to nine. We know this based on data. So, again, I do, I am for Option A. And I am simply, again, basing this on, my kids do not want remote. I know a lot of kids don't want remote. I have friends that are telling me, we cannot go remote again. Please don't vote remote. Option B, to me, I thought was a good option. But as far as budget-wise, I didn't think it was a tangible option. I thought that would have probably been the most, first of all, I thought it would have been the most difficult one to implement. And budget-wise, I thought it would have been absolutely the most expensive one to implement. So to me, the only option is Option A, with the way we are approaching it in the phases, and like Brenda said, I think we just kind of space out the older kids coming back in, compared to K through, pre-K through second grade and sixth graders. That's it.
Thank you, Michelle. Nick, did you have anything further?
I think that the phase, the introductory phase being spread out, I could be on board for, because it allows us to have lesser students in at any given time to start, so we can figure out kind of what our routine needs to be day in and day out. Because there has not been one day over the course of the last, you know, many months that we've had this many students in a place. So we don't know what that's going to look like. So yes, to phase that in smaller amounts over an extended period of time, I think is practical.
Thank you. So first, I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out and sticking it out. And I literally mean sticking, because I'm sticking to my chair right now. So the teachers that were here earlier, I appreciate them coming out. Our union representatives, I appreciate your words. We take all that very seriously. The past several months, our superintendent has been tasked to develop the Dairy Cooperative School District's school reopening plan. Tonight, we were presented with the plan to fully reopen schools with an option for remote learning for those families that may need this format. Also presented were two further plans from previous evenings that offer the flexibility to continue to educate our students if circumstances change in our environment. This plan is based on fact and medical guidance as we know it today, which means, sure, that can change. And our experts and the state will tell us when those plans need to change. New Hampshire went through its peak COVID case period in late April. And since that time, we have all been vigilant to continue to keep our family, friends, and neighbors healthy. This has resulted in a very low rate of infection and minimal hospitalizations. Even one death is too many. But as we all know, there are no guarantees in life. There is nothing in life that is risk-free. Just about everyone agrees that our children learn best when they're in our schools. And although remote instruction has its place when needed, it does not provide the safety net needed for social, emotional well-being, daily nutritional needs, and protections from abuse. Pediatricians I have spoken with have said that they are seeing increased caseloads of depression and anxiety in their patients. And although there have been fewer reports of child abuse and neglect over the past few months, there has been an increase in evidence of abuse and neglect once a child is finally seen by a healthcare practitioner. As a school board member, I must offer the best possible education available to each and every student in our town. Remote instruction, unfortunately, just creates another barrier to successful education for many dairy families. As has been stated numerous times, safety must come first in any plan for school in the fall. Safety for our staff, safety for our students is paramount. So often, over the past several months, we have read or heard people say, why are we not listening to the experts? This plan is based on expert guidance for the safety of our children and staff and the educational needs. We may yet see a spike in our state. And the more we can provide a traditional education, before that happens, the more our students will be able to grow and learn towards their future. The NWEA, which is an affiliation we use for our testing and learning resources, has reported preliminary research suggesting students nationwide will return to school this fall roughly 70% of learning gains in reading compared to a typical return to fall, and less than 50% retention in math. That's scary. If we go back in any other format, remote or hybrid, we will never catch these kids up. It will be a lost generation. There are families in this town that have the means and opportunity to subsidize their children's curriculum in a remote environment. And that's absolutely amazing, and I commend them. But that is not possible for many families facing recent economic adversity. And as I mentioned before, my job is to make a decision that helps every single one of our kids in this town. While we have the opportunity to provide in-person education, we must seize this method. Our children will not have a chance to make up for the losses in learning over the course of this year if we start in a remote or hybrid format. We do not know what will happen between now and August 31st. We do not know what will happen between August 31st and July 11th, and June 11th. But this plan allows for the maximum flexibility to quickly adapt to our environment as is needed. I don't think it's the school board's job to micromanage our administration, but I do like the idea of possibly relooking at the phase-in approach. And potentially, if we approve Plan A with recommendations to look at a little bit longer phase in, the problem is, we don't know how much time we have to try to get these kids somewhat caught up at the beginning of the year. And if the phase in lasts too long, we may lose some of that. So I think we leave that up to the experts to figure out if they can do something better. And also ask them for recommendations on further mask guidelines. So with that, anybody else on the board have further comment?
One other thing I will say is, I've heard from a bunch of parents with questions about Plan A and the phase in. And the most common comment I've heard is, if we're going to go with Plan A, for those kids that are going to be home a week or four days and have remote learning, I've heard from a lot of parents, they're just going to let it go. That their kids had enough of remote learning, and that four days of remote learning when they'll be at school next week isn't something they're just ready to deal with mentally. And I can understand that emotion. I have a bit of it in me. My question related to the plastic sheeting was more related to the fact that I was under the impression we had less space than we did. But I think we should, if we go in with any phased-in approach, I think we need to go in with the realistic expectation that the kids that are, that a lot of kids will wait to really start learning till they really-
wait to really start learning till they really sit in that chair, that the expectations of that first week, if you're waiting to phase in, is really you're waiting to start because mentally I think that's going to be hard on kids. And I think we should just go in with that expectation with whatever plan we do.
Okay. Anything further? Do we want to entertain amending the motion with further recommendations?
So I'm confused because you kind of said, I'm not going to micromanage, so I don't really want to overstep my bounds right this minute.
No, 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 I think you misunderstood. No, I think, I think your idea was good, but I think let's let them figure out rather than us tell them, you have to go back on September 8th or September 12th.
I was just using the dates that are in here. That was why I threw that out there.
Okay. No, but I think offering them some recommendations.
Well, if I can speak here. Go ahead and retort to that a little bit. We do need a calendar approval tonight, so I would suggest that, you know, you do make the guidance, that's okay, and you do provide the guidance. And in terms of students who are going to be phased in in a remote learning environment, those count as instructional days. So we need those instructional days. We are forgiven three instructional days by the Commissioner of Education, thus allowing for additional professional development, which our union has asked for and our administrators have asked for, too. So coincidentally, the Commissioner of Education allotted three days of which to be split up during the year or used in the beginning of the year. We chose to use them in the beginning of the year, and I think those would be very valuable. However, those remote days for students, our teachers will be planning for, and they will be instructional days for students. I just want everyone to be aware of that.
Okay.
All right. I will make a motion to move forward to Plan A with a longer phased-in schedule. And also, to be clarified, that masks are required. I understand the need for mask breaks. Oh, wait, I'll just not say that right now because I'm making a motion. There's my motion.
And I'll second that.
Motion by Brenda, second by Michelle. Any further discussion? Okay, folks, we're going to have a roll call vote tonight. Lynn?
Yes.
Erica? Brenda? Jessica?
No.
Michelle?
Yes.
Nick?
No.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes.
Derek, on the calendar, were it coincides with this possible change, do we want to postpone that vote?
Are you good with postponing the calendar or do you need that?
Probably postpone the calendar vote. I do want to get that calendar out to parents and families. That's the, that's the key here, so, but I would like to just reconvene with our instructional team and our leadership team in order to make the right decision and, you know, our principals and assistant principals and our entire leadership team to make that. No decision is actually right, I don't think, but in order to make the most informed decision as a team like we usually do. So I'd like the liberty of doing that. I don't know if we can think of some other way that the board can approve the calendar. I can explain the other calendar change tonight very easily that is not affected by the change of phase-in dates and the mask requirement. It still stands, the mask requirement changes, it still stands. The only change to that would be that there would be more stringent language about the mask requirement, and we can fix that and have that throughout the plan. And we can work with our medical personnel of that.
I'm going to pause here and just thank the medical professionals and let them get out of here. Appreciate all your time you spent with us this evening, along with the task force effort.
Thank you. Matt, Chris, and Sue, thank you.
Mary Ann, also, I'm asking a lot, but do you need approval of the policies this evening or can that wait two weeks?
Austin? Do you, we need approval of the attendance policy? I think that could wait two weeks, Derek. We can.
Okay. And Ms. Samard, is there anything pressing in your report that needs to be tonight? Okay. So I would make a motion to table Items 5, which is the calendar, Items 7, which are the policies, and Item 8, which is the Business Administrator's Report until August 11th.
So, so Derek.
Second.
Derek, can you repeat that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I recommend tabling the revised calendar, which is Item 5 on the agenda. Item 7, which is the policies, and Item 8, which is the Business Administrator's Update until the August 11th meeting.
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion, and I think we had a second before as well. Thank you. Any discussion?
So is there a reason that we can't pass the, all the policies are a second reading, so we don't need to explain them again? We could, we could pass them unless somebody had a problem with them prior? I just think there's some, the suicide prevention policy is really important to be passed. We're going to have staff training in it, and I think that's really important. I mean, they're all important, but there's, there's policies that need, need, yeah, it's a second reading. If they were first reading, I would agree with you. I'm not trying to be obstinate, but I just think there's things in here that we need in place.
Okay.
I do need to go back to a question on the calendar, too, at some point before this meeting closes.
Just keep in mind, the best decisions never happen the first thing on Wednesday morning.
All right. At 12:01, I guess we missed that. So Mary Ann, did you need the calendar?
All I want to do is clarify something in, out of respect to our teaching staff and our parent, and our families, I would like to make sure that I get a revised calendar out to families and our teaching staff. In order to do that, I need board approval. Is there any other way that we can do this prior to a meeting on August 11th? I just think that's a late notification to staff and families. I don't mean tonight or this morning.
No. I mean, we can convene a special meeting.
We, right. We can think about this and come back to it. You know, we can talk tomorrow, but I would like to get this calendar approved prior to August 11th so we can all get it out.
Okay. All right. So I guess the amended motion is to table Item 5 to a later date and Item 8 to the August 11th meeting.
Thank you. And.
A second on that.
Second read?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
I think Mr. Mankel just indicated he ran out of tape on his VHS, so we're going to start over.
We have a.
All right. Item 7, policy.
Okay. For a second read this evening, we have the suicide prevention and response policy, JL, my eyes are good, but boy, JLDBB, suicide prevention and response policy. Yes, please.
Make a motion, move that JLDBB. Have a second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay. Second reading for IKABB, student progress report, IK-A grading students, IK earning of credits, IHCA summer activities, all related to the curriculum revision of 306.14.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Brenda, Michelle second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
And policy JH, attendance tidiness and truancy to add in the language related to remote and online and so forth. Second reading.
Motion for policy JH.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Manifest report.
I make a motion to approve the manifest for the amount of $7,86,219.26. Where $3,528,335.93 is general payroll. $3,557,883.33 are general expense.
A second.
Lynn with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Delegations and individuals? Okay. Other business? Nothing? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Folks, we will see if, at some point before the 11th for the calendar, but our regular next school board meeting will be August 11th. Thank you.